Half a day and good morning, and thank you very much for waiting. We expected only five, and we've received a lot more than that, and I'm very grateful. So, thank you for being here today. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture is now called to order. Today's Monday, July 18, 2022. The time is about 9:48 AM. So, in compliance with the open government law, notices for today's roundtable meeting were published in the Guam Daily Post on Monday, July 11, and Friday, July 15, 2022. They were also posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal, and this is being livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. I just asked that, for purposes today, it's a roundtable, if you could just identify yourself, so it's always clear on the record, we transcribed these, just from the audio, so that would help us out a lot. All right, so we've convened this roundtable discussion this morning to discuss efforts to deter and reduce criminal sexual conduct offenses, including a report on the effectiveness of penalties, assessments, testing, treatment, rehabilitation, and a status update on the implementation of Public Law 3571, which was relative to establishing a standardized risk assessment and system of treatment for criminal sexual conduct offenders. The people of Guam have consistently expressed great concern and fear for their safety for what appears to be an epidemic of sexual violence in our community. More so, there's an understandable sense of outrage from the community upon hearing regular reports in the media of individuals having committed these offenses, or those who have committed these offenses been released and recommitted these offenses. So, I think that the public, you know, there's many issues that they point to. They point to, are the penalties enough? Are we releasing them too early, when there is great risk? Are we doing all we can between those who we know have committed crimes and bringing them to prosecution? That type of thing. Or when they're being, you know, adequately monitoring those who we know, you know, are at risk of recidivism? So, they call on us, the legislature, to address these concerns, and we have many senators introducing bills to stiffen the penalties, you know, thinking that is the, that is what is necessary, and that it's the penalties that are at fault. But we've seen many of the judges or the courts have, you know, over the years testified that they want flexibility in sentencing. So, the courts are not here today, but I'm asking you, who are our front lines in these offenses, to share with us your perspectives on these types of things, and hopefully to help us as senators treat all the different legislation that are coming through, not just for penalties, but for even defining the crimes and many other things, how to treat the victims, so that we can be better informed. So, we've got in place now, from prior legislatures, mandatory minimum sentences that require the development of a standardized procedure for measuring the risk of criminal sexual conduct, repeat offenses, identifying potential for rehab, and more recently, in this term, a law to restrict sentence reductions for persons convicted of first and second degree CSC, a law to ensure that the offense of fourth-degree criminal sexual conduct against a minor cannot be reduced from a third-degree felony, and a law to clearly define consent and expanding the definition of mental incapacitation and physically helpless, to protect individuals who voluntarily consume an intoxicating substance and are victims of sexual assault, amongst other legislation aimed at protecting victims and deterring sexual violence. So, the purpose of our discussion is, much as possible, to receive a clear picture of the prevalence of criminal sexual conduct crimes on Guam, the efforts to deter and reduce these crimes by examining the effectiveness of penalties, the availability and effectiveness of tools to assess, test, treatment, and rehabilitate those offenders. We want to highlight the challenges that you all face, and we know that you face challenges. We acknowledge that straight off, so we'd like to help. And the order of today's discussion will then go, I have a list of five items. One, discussion on the disparities between the Guam Police Department Criminal Sexual Conduct Arrests versus cases charged by the Attorney General, and recommendations to address gaps. Not all of the arrests are being charged, and we just want to know, are there issues that can be resolved there? And when they are charged, those that go to plea versus go to trial, a little discussion of that, and I think the public needs to understand, they sometimes look at pleas to be very bad for allowing offenders out, and so I'd like to just have that explained to them. And the trial rates, of course, of the sexual abuse offenders, and then the effectiveness of the penalties, from your view, the sentencing, and the recidivism of these offenders after release, after they've served their sentence, during parole, or during pre-trial. And in that regard, we'd like to follow up on the assessment and the testing and the treatment, the rehabilitation. Is it even possible to rehabilitate criminal sexual conduct offenders? And if not, then is our monitoring adequate after they are released from serving their time? Or are, you know, that's really what I think the community should know. So, prior to this hearing, we requested status updates and search reports relative to these topics from the judiciary of Guam, the probation office, which is here today, thank you, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, the Department of Corrections and its Guam Parole Board, which are here today, thank you, the Guam Police Department, and Chief is here, thank you, Chief, the Attorney General of Guam, thank you Attorney General for being here today, we are Chief of Prosecutors, Basil Amalan, and the Public Disservice Corporation, thank you very much to the Deputy Executive Director Morrison for being here today. And I say the chairperson of the parole board, but I'm gonna have you all introduce yourselves as well. All right. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues, beginning with the Vice Chair of my committee, Senator Sabina Perez, our Minority Leader, Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. So, we'll begin with discussion with the judiciary, represented by the probation office and Chief Probation Officer, the Jagomas, the Attorney General's Office and the Guam Police Department, on disparities between GPD criminal sexual conduct arrests versus cases charged by the Attorney General, those that are charged, that go through plea agreements versus trial, and the trial rates of all sexual abuse offenders. And so, because I've asked you to prepare your own reports, I'm going to just give you in turn time, but before we begin, just so that my colleagues and the public who are watching have an idea of who are here, if you don't mind, we'll just begin on one end, and introduce yourself, please.
John Lozama, Member of the Guam Parole Board.
Michael Quinata, Chief Parole Officer.
Steve Ignacio, Chief of Police.
Chief Ignacio, can you also tell us who's here from the Guam Police Department?
Sure, I have Major Andrew Kidiguet, the Investigations Bureau Chief, Captain Scott Waite, the Operations Chief, Criminal Investigation Division, and Sergeant Eugene Charfres from the Domestic Assault Response Team, the DART, which oversees investigations of sexual assault and family violence and domestic violence.
Thank you.
Joanne Augustine, Victim Advocate Supervisor at the Attorney General's Office Victim Service Center.
Levin Camacho, AG's Office.
Good morning, Basil Amalan, Chief Prosecutor.
Sofia Santistias, the Director of Policy Planning and Community Relations with the judiciary. Just for Madam Speaker's benefit, I know that the invitation was extended as the Chief Probation Officer. Given the topics that you requested information on, we also brought folks from the Sex Offender Registry and Client Services and Family Counseling. So, I'll let them introduce themselves, but that's the context.
Good morning, Rosanna Villagomezagun, Chief Probation Officer.
Hi, good morning, Erica Perez, from the Guam Sex Offender Registry Office.
Hi, good morning, Lisa Baza, from Client Services and Family Counseling with the judiciary.
Thank you all so much for being here and really bringing your top teams. I very much appreciate that. So, we will begin, Chief? We'll hear from GPD first, followed by the AG, and then the judiciary. Oh, this again is, we wanted to talk about the data you might have regards to crime rates. We looked at the 2019 Uniform Crime Report, which provides data on the percentage of offenses cleared by arrest from 2015 to 2019. And, I don't know, I just wanted to, do you have remarks that you'd like to begin with, or do you want me to just?
You can ask questions. So, we brought data that you requested.
Okay.
It's the total number of arrests from 2017 to 2021.
Okay.
And the total number of cases entertained between 2017 up to 2021 as well.
All right.
So, as a comparison, the number of arrests from, I'm sorry, the number of cases, we'll start there, from 2017 to 2021 is 1,282. That's anywhere from a first degree all the way down to a fourth-degree criminal sexual conduct, and we have 547 criminal sexual conduct arrests between that same time period. We also have a breakdown by year, if needed.
Okay, yes, I would appreciate that. So, how would you explain the difference between the number of cases you have, which is 1,800 some, and the much lower number of arrests that you have, which is 547?
Sergeant G., we have a 40, based on what I'm reading, we have a 43% clearance rate for CSC, and, come on.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Guam Behavioral Health has also joined us, if we could get a chair for them, thank you. Please proceed, Sergeant Waite.
Sorry, Madam Speaker, could you repeat the inquiry, the question that you had?
Okay, so we've got the statistics of the number of cases that you've checked into from the years 2017 to 2021, that's 1,800 plus, and we have the number of arrests from those cases to be 547. This is only criminal sexual conduct cases, and I just wanted, an explanation as to why do you think there's so few, so much fewer arrests than there are cases that you look into?
Well, there's a number of things, Madam Speaker. First off is that in 2011, this legislative body, with the introduction of Speaker BJ Cruz, had extended the jurisdiction or the statute of limitation for first-degree and second-degree CSCs. So, we no longer have a statute of limitation on that. Second of all is that these are very complex cases, so some of them are clear-cut, and the ones that we solved a lot really are the acute cases. Those are the ones that happen within a 72-hour to 128-hour timeframe, but as we know, sex crimes are usually reported late, and so evidence that needs to be gathered is not in place. Also, you know, our staffing. Back in the days when we had 500-plus officers, we had a sex crimes unit, and I know that the chief has talked about this publicly before, where there was a dedicated sex crimes unit, but right now, that's been encumbered by the Domestic Assault Response Team, which actually investigates both of those crimes, domestic violence and sexual assault. And, you know, that's mainly because a lot of the perpetrators are, you know, home members, household members, or family members. However, we are exploring into creating a sex crimes unit, you know, by itself, just to be dedicated strictly to sex crimes. The best way I can describe, you know, sex crimes is it's almost like investigating a cold case homicide. You know, it's reported late, and the challenges that the officers have is really trying to gather all the evidence that they need, and then, of course, the cooperation of victims. And, you know, through that process, you know, because of all the trauma that has occurred, it's hard for us to, sometimes we lose victims in between, in between then. So, what my team has been doing in the interim for the past five, six years is, we've been in communication directly with the Attorney General's Office, with Sean Brown, and some of the other attorneys that are there, you know, and we actually get a lot of their consultation before moving forward on arrests. Cases like this are the hardest cases to prosecute, and so we need to, we need to actually get over the threshold of beyond a reasonable doubt, you know, because by the time it gets to the courts, it's very challenging for us to get a conviction. And that's, you know, that's, those are part of the reasons why the number of arrests are low, you know, in comparison to how many we're taking in now. Well, the statute of limitation, when it comes in, you know, some of those numbers of arrests could have been from previous years, not necessarily for that particular year. So, for instance, in 2017, if we had 500 cases, there may have been some arrests from 2011, 12, 13, those may have been some cases from years before. Speaker, if you also may add.
Chief.
We brought your data on arrests and number of cases taken, and like Sergeant G. said, it doesn't also account for cases that we may have closed otherwise. We may have suspended, we may have suspended a case because there's insufficient probable cause for an arrest, or we may have closed the case because there may be conflicting statements, and still not, maybe not enough probable cause for an arrest, and we may have just referred to the case to prosecution for their review and possible indictment. And, you know, also, you know, like Sergeant G. said, we have experienced a lack of personnel, and so, you know, getting enough people into the sex crimes, a dedicated sex crimes unit, I was a member one time of the Sex Crimes Investigation Unit when we were down here at Pedro Plaza, and those were the good old days of the 1990s, where there was over 400 police officers in the Guam Police Department.
All right, well, thank you for your efforts to look into re-establishing a dedicated unit for sex crimes, and I know that your DART team, SART team, DART team, is very active in, right now, working on the sex assault and the domestic violence cases. Okay, so, reported too late, you're saying is like the number-one reason, or the number-one challenge that you are having with these types of cases in particular, evidence is lost, reported too late. Do we have that type of data, or data that shows kind of cases which the AG, he said, vies, you know, not prosecutable, I guess, or not decline arrests, I guess? You're saying you're discussing with them even prior to arrests, so?
Right.
Yeah, so, I guess what I want also, I think you've done a very good job of explaining, but I just wanna, what assurance can you give us that it's not just shoddy investigation work, or victims are too afraid, they do not feel protected enough? Because we've also heard that kind of rumor, so if you could just confirm?
Yeah. So, at the Guam Police Department, we also have victim advocates that work closely with the Victim Advocates Office at the Attorney General's Office as well, as also the other nonprofit organizations. So, it is one of those cases, you know, when we work with criminal sexual conduct, these are one of the cases where, you know, victims are sometimes hesitant to come forward, and even when they do come forward, they're sometimes hesitant to go through and follow through with going to, you know, prosecuting a case, and I think probably the AGs can talk to this, because, you know, we probably don't see too many cases going for trial, because, you know, we're dealing with victims that have to come forward and take that stand, and, you know, be brave enough to get up there on the stand and, you know, talk about what happened to them, and identify their accuser. So, those are some of the dynamics that we face investigating also as well. When they come forward is that they may recant, or they may not be willing to move forward and move the case along, so that becomes the challenges. And then, like Sergeant G. said, sometimes they come forward years later, after the incident has occurred, evidence is lost, you know, there's no crime scene to process anymore, victims are a lot older now, and they're just coming forward. So, those are some of the dynamics of a criminal sexual conduct investigation.
Can we get, do you have data on that, that we could also get? Data on cases that are cleared, I guess you call them?
Yes, cleared otherwise?
Yes.
Yeah, we can go back.
And the reasons, right?
Sure.
Are those being also assessed?
Okay.
Yes, okay, thank you.
We'll look at our data.
I think that would be helpful, and I do appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you.
I know my colleagues have questions on this topic, I'm gonna move on to the AG's presentation, and then the judiciary, and then I'll open it up for questions. Attorney General Camacho.
Thank you, Speaker. I just want to start by clarifying, the AG's office doesn't release defendants, and I'm gonna repeat that, our office does not release defendants. And I say that because there's this misconception, and sometimes people imply that our office somehow is responsible as to when a defendant is released pre-trial, and that is a judicial function. They are carrying out the bail statute that this body has authority over to modify or to change. I don't see DOC here, but I know that they have been proponents of the electronic monitoring, so to the extent that this body, you set priorities through appropriation. I'm sure Chief would be okay with an appropriation specific to Sexual Assault Response Team at GPD. I can get into other recommendations, but I just want to be upfront, I noticed the media tends to use passive tense when it talks about release decisions and not active tense. Just wanna, there's a little bit of nuance in GPD's stats, on arrest, you can have multiple arrests for a single incident. So, if you look at their cases, a first-degree CSC might also be arrested in the same case for second-degree CSC, third-degree CSC, and fourth-degree CSC. The same thing goes for the way that we charge out our cases. A single case defendant could have multiple charges, which doesn't mean that there are 1,200 actual cases, it just means that there are arrests. So, to really, and we haven't provided data because we want to be able to sift through and provide this legislature with an accurate number of the actual number of defendants who are being charged, and not just the number of charges. In terms of disparity, we, these are the cases that when we get a call, we're gonna charge it out, and I know Chief put about 40 CSC arrests for 2021, that's tracking what our data was showing approximately for our actual cases charged out in that same year. We wanted to go back five years to align, but when you start aggregating, again, that's where you're gonna see disparity. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're not charging out cases, it just means that one case could be all of them.
Sorry, I would like to see the year by year.
Yes.
Of course, we're more, it's more relevant to us what's happening now, right, with your more recent efforts, so thank you.
Yes, but showing the number of charges filed under the offenses isn't an accurate way of capturing the problem in Guam, because, again, one single defendant could have 10 charges, first-degree, second-degree, third-degree, and that's when you get to resolution, as an example, you know, if it's a lesser included offense, or we can get into all the specifics, but I just want to point out that the arrests, I don't want to say overestimates, but it could be much fewer defendants who are being arrested than the actual number of arrests, if that makes sense. So, I've brought Ms. Augustine here just to talk about, echo what Sergeant Charfres was, that the vast majority of these cases are delayed reporting, and they are family members, or people known to the victim. So, Joanne, you want to just talk about it a little bit?
Hello. So, my name is Joanne, I've been an advocate, a system-based advocate at the Attorney General's Office for about like 13 years now, and prior to that, I was a community-based advocate, and so it's kind of different, my perspective. Back when I was a community advocate, you know, ideally, you want these perpetrators to be locked up, the keys thrown away forever, right? But being on, as a system-based advocate, I get to see behind the scenes and, you know, the whole legal aspect of things, and just what these victims have to go through, and it's, it's not always cut and dry, it's like what the chief was saying, a lot of times, these kind of cases are, the perpetrators are either friends of family members or family members, victims are not always willing to come forward, they've, they've had to muster up enough courage to come out and say something, and then to find out, like, the whole lengthy process of the legal, the legal side of things. There's sometimes, or a lot of times, they're reluctant, and so, I want to say, I know you're going to speak about the plea versus trial, a lot of times, as it's making its way towards a trial, these negotiations, victims are all the time, in all my years of experience, they're, they're, they're part of that process. The fact that they are able to provide input and feedback, and have some kind of control on the outcome of these cases empowers them. And from my perspective, I see that although in public, it sounds like it's really a little slap on the hand, or it's minimal, minimal kind of punishment, I see the victims being relieved, that they're, and they're not having to get up on the stand and retell their stories. I tell, I see them just being relieved that they're not forced. So, I know you had mentioned something about explaining to the public and them having this dissatisfaction over the terms that they're having to serve and the time that they serve in jail. Victims are very much involved, and they're consulted, and that's what I've seen from the office. That's my role, and we make sure that their rights are met, and that they're very much a participant in those consultations, and that they provide feedback and input. So, it's not always, you know, the ideal where they get locked away forever, I mean, there's just a lot, it's complex, and so, I just wanted to provide that feedback and perspective.
And I will, just, GPD will get, and they're making a probable cause determination, so if they call us, usually they will only call if they have doubts or reservations, whether there's PC to make an arrest, and if an officer at that point is wondering whether there's enough to make an arrest, you know, our office has to decide whether there's evidence to prove our case beyond a reasonable doubt, which is the highest burden of law and the standard that we have to meet when we go to trial. We look at this as the conviction rate is extremely high in Guam, four cases where we've charged out CSC, but, you know, kind of echoing with Joanne, we had a case maybe a year or two ago, I won't get into the specifics, but someone, the defendant committed suicide the day before trial, two days before trial, and you have now a family member, so the victim and their family now have to deal with the fact that their relative or someone who's a family friend is gone now, and their family's blaming them, why did you file charges? Why did you? So, these are the stories that don't get out there in the public, it's just, why did this happen? Why did this? As Joanne said, there are victims, you also get from the reporting to our case, recanting, and I would say our CSC cases have as high, if not higher, recant rates than family violence cases, which are, you know, three-quarters of them, there's gonna be a change in the story. One thing that we have done to address this, we received a grant through the Governor's Office, actually, to set up a video interview room that we want to make available to GPD, so that early on, when the victim goes in, it's a single interviewed statement, and you're not having to get interviewed by GPD, get interviewed by, interviewed by our investigators. So, there are things that the legislature can't do through appropriation to make it easier for all of us to address, if you come to us three months later and said, I changed my mind, that's not what happened, but we have a video interview, it's a lot easier versus a written statement, or no statement whatsoever, and then you're having to call an officer to impeach a victim. So, when we look at the plea versus trial rates, you know, Chief used the word acute, we don't have very many acute cases, or Sergeant Charfres mentioned acute cases, where it's in the immediate aftermath, they're going to Healing Hearts, they're getting a rape kit done. I mean, I don't even recall one in recent memory, we had one that went to trial that was somewhat acute within 48 hours, but that is a very, very, very small percentage of cases that there is an arrest, of all the cases. very, very small percentage of cases that there is an arrest of all the cases that Chief talked about. Usually it's a year, two years, sometimes further down the road. Oftentimes, they are young, they are minors, and Basil O'Malley can talk about, he went to trial with, the victim was 10 years old, but we had a case last week where the victim was four-year-old. So having to call a four-year-old to identify a defendant and to identify what that person did to them, those are the evidentiary challenges that we encounter in prosecuting cases as to why you would negotiate a plea versus going to trial, because the risk that a four-year-old is not going to be able to identify exactly who did that to them and what they did is real. And if our standard is the highest burden of proof, you know, I, I believe last week that case, the maximum sentence for a second-degree CSC is 15 years. We went and Basil argued for 12 years, that was the range, 3 to 12, and the judge sentenced to nine. So that's a situation where there's a plea agreement, it's within, you know, the ballpark of what would have happened if we had gone to trial, and then it's the judicial function of sentencing that kicks in, and, you know, we don't have control over that. So I just hope that I was able to address, you know, I don't believe there's actually a big disparity between the arrests on the CSC, on the criminal sexual conduct, and cases we charge out. The only time that I know it's either there's no PC or beyond statute of limitations. And going back to this 2011 change, we have cases reported that happened before the change in 2011, that people are coming forward, things that happened to them 30 years ago. And GPD's responding to that, they're taking the interviews, but then we just basically say we cannot proceed in these cases because at that point, that was not the law of land and it cannot apply retroactively.
Could you just restate that so everybody can understand? Which types of cases can you prosecute?
So first- and second-degree CSC, which is sexual penetration either based on age or force, the statute of limitations was removed in 2011. But we are still, GPD is still receiving reports of rape, 2010, 2005. And so when they are doing their investigation and they refer to us, we cannot prosecute retroactively. So anything that happened before 2011, that, that law doesn't apply to. It's only moving forward prospectively, and that's based on the Constitution ex post facto types of things. So, you know, GPD, they do, they take the interviews, they interview the witness, the victims, they gather evidence to the extent they can, and they come to us, and that's the clearest case where we've declined to prosecute is because it's barred by statute limitations. We've had other cases, fourth-degree CSC is an example, where if it's a misdemeanor, we have one year to file a charge. Felonies, we have three years typically. But if you're reporting that someone, there's sexual contact and it happened in 2019, GPD responds, takes the complaint, but you're beyond the misdemeanor statute of limitations. So those are, those are the times where it'll be a clearer call. There may be PC, but we're, we can't charge it based on statute of limitations.
All right. Can you share with us the data that you have?
We will compile, again, we're having to sift through not charges, but actual cases that are filed involving CSC allegations.
All right. I, I use the word, the term "charged," I agree, and yeah, but I really do want the data. You're suggesting that charge, how many people were charged, defendants were charged? Yeah, okay. Mr. Chief Prosecutor O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Okay, I am on. I just want to reiterate some of the things that Gino, and I'm sorry, I just called him Gino because we're on a first-name basis, and unfortunately, he has my phone number on his cell phone, and Joanne's comments. It's a little disturbing to have to report that the majority of our CSC cases are, involve family members. And either it's a, it's an uncle, it's a stepdad, it's a father, it's a grandfather. And when you run into those situations and you have to meet with these victims, and we meet with these victims, I instituted several years ago, we have what's called as a simple meet and greet. They just come in, it's a howdy-doody, my name is Basil O'Malley, you know, I'm reviewing your case. And it's just a short introduction, just so they see our face, they know that we're involved in their case. And then as we get farther along the process, we get into discussing going to trial or working out a plea, plea agreement with the defendant, we meet with them again, sometimes it's just over the phone. One of the difficulties that we run into many, many, many times is just finding the victim. And you have to understand, if the perpetrator is a family member, and I'll simplify it, it's not all the cases, but it's a common case where the perpetrator is mom's boyfriend. And mom does not support the victim because that is mom's boyfriend, whether it's a financial obligation or there's a strong attachment to this person, mom just decides to go with the perpetrator's side of the story and does not believe the victim. And that creates a lot of problems because a lot of times, they'll either leave island, we've had that recently happen to us, or they just disappear. We've had so far, just in, I mean, I'll say last couple of months, where we have to contact Department of Education to find out where's the child registered for school so we can locate the child so we can go meet with the victim and let mom know, okay, we know where you're at now, and we want to go meet with the victim. So we run into that problem too regularly, unfortunately. I do want to talk briefly on two recent cases I did this month. I took one case to trial, and that's the one the General Kamacho talked about. The incident happened in 2020, when the victim was 10 years old, and it was someone related to the family. And we're very careful when we describe these cases to, to make sure we don't give any clue, and a lot of times, it frustrates the media because we purposely design and disguise, disguise who the perpetrator is and the relationship to the victim, because it's, you know, everyone can trace it down, and we really want to avoid that. That's why you ever notice, even though we, you'll see in the declaration and the magistrate's complaint, we notified by a school, we don't identify the school, we don't even identify the village. It's to do our best to keep the victim's identity secret. But this incident happened in 2020, when the victim was 10. It was finally reported out in October of 2021, and I took it to trial a couple of weeks ago. And by that point, the victim was 13. And she was an excellent victim, I met with her several times, she managed to hold, hold true on the witness stand, never altered her story, and that's the problem. And I know most of you have children, and you know, when you're dealing with a 10, 11, 12-year-old, their ability to remember specific facts gets cloudy. And so, you know, they'll, they'll say, well, I was wearing a green dress as opposed to a red dress. No, we were in the car when this happened. And those things are used, rightfully so by the defense attorney, to muddy the waters. And so that makes it much more difficult. And so in that case, I mean, I was, I was fortunate, I got a guilty verdict, but just last week, when I worked out that plea agreement, it was a four-year-old victim. There's no way we're going to be able to put a four-year-old victim. I've done that in the past, it does not work, when you start talking about that young a child to try and testify. So you do the best you can to get a plea agreement, and once again, you know, you've got to work with the family members, which creates problems when you have family members who are not totally supportive of the victim. And I had a case recently, another trial earlier this year, where it literally broke up the family. I had two victims in that case. One victim is now living with grandma because mom doesn't believe her. And then the other victim still lives with mom because, you know, she's, she's willing to overlook that mom doesn't really believe either one of them, but they're both telling the truth, got a conviction. But it still broke up that family, and that is the concern we run into when we're dealing with these kinds of cases. And so I know we, we get beat up quite a bit, bit, because, oh, we're working out plea agreements. Our job is to try to resolve the case without further traumatizing the victim. And that is a major concern, and I'm assuming Guam Behavioral and Even Probation will be able to, and Client Service will talk about, you know, when you put a victim on the stand, it's very traumatic for them. And you notice I keep talking about young victims, because we do have adult victims, absolutely, but the, the majority of our cases involve very young victims, and we have to be very careful in how we address those. We're very fortunate, our victim services unit and our advocates are very good, they're well-trained, and they may, they know how to, I call it, just hold their hand and give them the strength to hang in there, and let's go forward with this deal. One of the problems we do run into is getting these matters to trial. You know, we, the sooner we can get a CSC case to trial, the better it is and can get it wrapped up. But a lot of times, the defense know they can, they can drag it out and, you know, because it, it goes into the memory process. So those, those are things I want to be sure to touch on and bring to the, and as far as charging, and Gino will confirm, you know, we have an on-call prosecutor system set up where there's, we rotate, we usually five of us that are on that on-call rotation. My, my weekend ended yesterday, last night, so I'm good. And anytime they have a concern about, do they have PC or not, or are they running by us, we, we don't make that call. Boots on the ground, that's what it's called by GPD, boots on the ground, the officer at the scene has to make that call whether they feel they have probable cause to make an arrest. But we can provide them information and saying, well, these are the things you need to look at, and then ultimately, and the main thing is, you know, we, we will always support an officer's decision who's at the scene, and say, well, you think, you know, do what you think is best, and we will support you in that. And then once we get the actual charge, sometimes we just say, you know, do a book and release, and then refer the case to us so we can review it in more detail. Because a lot of times, you know, we run into a situation where it's, it's very preliminary, they're still doing a lot of work, and then they get sent it over to DART and burden them, and I hate to use that word, burden them, but that's, that's, I feel sorry for the guys in DART, because they are tremendously burdened with a lot of these cases, both sex crimes and the family violence, and it'd be great for GPD if they broke it up into sex crimes as a separate unit. Because the, you know, and in our office, many, many years ago, we used to put family violence and sex crimes in one unit, because the dynamics are very similar, I was using, because it involves family members, that's what we encountered. Where now, I've broken that up, we have more of a sex crimes component, but with our staffing, we do more than just one thing in our office, just to make, get as much stuff before the court and get these cases resolved. That's it for now.
Can I just ask, if it's a family member, but it's a sex crime, how, are they charged under the criminal sexual conduct statutes or the family violence?
If, if, we, we go, excuse, I call it, we go, the biggest bang for the buck.
Okay.
The highest charge we can go is where we go.
And where is that now?
That's usually, that'd be sex crimes.
Okay. All right, yeah, I wish we could get the data, how many victims recant, right? I mean, I just think it really is very helpful for, for us to hear what you're saying in general, but the, yeah, the details would be also helpful. How many recant, how many cases actually do you, do you advise on maybe, just general numbers and the ages, right, that you, you plea out maybe? I mean, just things like that?
Okay. And I want to be clear, what we'll try to do is provide information, and Joanne can attest to this, and I know Gino can also. I always make sure we distinguish between a recantation and minimization. Because a lot of times, they come in and they'll say, oh, no, it actually happened, but we don't think we should go forward with the case for some reason. And so it's not a recantation, but a lot of people misconstrue them, just lump it in there as a recantation. A recantation is when they come in and say, it didn't happen. And, and they will tell you, I don't accept that initially. I, we sit there and we carefully go over everything that has been said in the past and make sure, if it's a true recantation, then I have no problems dismissing a case, but most of the time, I'll call it minimization, where they're just trying to figure out, well, no, it happened, but, you know, he's the only one making money in the household, and we don't want, see, because the fear, you got to understand this, and I understand this from the mother's point of view, you know, the biggest fear, especially in our family violence, and I'm sorry, I'm shifting gears here, I just, you know, I like to talk. The chief, the boss knows, is, a big fear for a mother is to be homeless. And, and if the only breadwinner is about to be locked up for a long, long time, it really increases the odds of that family's now going to be homeless. And I've had to encounter mothers who have that fear, and it is a valid fear. And we work with that, and we try and say, you know, I know, but we can't allow this to happen. Because, you know, my job is to enforce the law.
All right, I share that concern. As a practicing attorney, that was the number one issue I thought I had, was their fear of losing financial support entirely. But, okay, so earlier, somebody said that the recant, the victims recant, like three-fourths of the victims recant. And so, yeah, that's why I want to get that very clear, is it really three-fourths, or are you saying it's a lower number, and most of those are just minimization? But anyways, if you could, the sooner the better, yeah, if clear that up.
Speaker, we don't, we are moving in the direction of tracking that data, but that's not something that our advocates, and it goes back to, you know, our advocates are there, they're doing accompaniment.
Yes.
In terms of data entry, and I think all of us benefit, the better, more data we have, the more accurate picture, that's a trend that we're moving in, is to track recants in particular with our family violence, and we'll probably have a similar field for CSC cases as well. But at this point, we, we haven't been tracking that.
Okay. All right. We want to know, because we want to know, you know, our efforts on the other side to provide shelters, to provide the, you know, a way for the victims to move forward, yeah, obviously needs to be worked on as well. All right, we'll move to the, I said the judiciary next. I guess we're talking about cases that are charged. Well, we were talking about cases arrested versus charged, I don't know if there's information from the judiciary yet that you'd like to share in this regard?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. By the time the cases come to the judiciary, in terms of where probation is concerned, if a defendant is detained, then of course, we will interview the defendant and make recommendations to the court. And our concern, when a defendant comes to the court, is their due process rights until their case is resolved in court. And so basically, our role is to monitor and, and their conditions, and if recommendations are needed, be able to make those recommendations to mitigate risk of flight or danger to the community. So at the pre-trial stage, the initial stage, the, the concern is that this defendant appears in court and, and is able to comply with all their conditions of pre-trial release. We do not get involved in terms of the court process, in terms of the disposition of the cases. We basically do, that's up to the parties. And so we basically do provide the supervision that we need as they go through that, that process. If a pre-sentence investigation report is ordered, then that's when we get involved in a case, and we'll conduct the pre-sentence investigation for that and make recommendations to the court. But if the case goes through and, and there are the plea negotiations that occur and are brought before the court, then that is, the agreements are between the parties. Once they are sentenced, then it depends on the sentence. If they are placed on probation, then we, you know, of course, supervise them if they're on probation. If they are sentenced to a term of imprisonment, then they will be, serve their imprisonment time, and then they will be released to parole. And so, and so that is the, the process in which that goes through the system. And so.
Do you make, does the probation office make recommendations on the sentence, the plea agreements, recommendations on the sentencings based on plea agreements?
On?
For example, his example was the plea agreement gives a range of sentence, does your office get involved at all in recommendations?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you very much. Director, I'd like to recognize that Director Ariola from the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is also here. And I, I just want to ask you on this topic, the one question is that, so we talked about, or the Attorney General talked about, you know, improving the interview so that there's only one interview and the police, and that the Attorney General's Office will also be represented. And I know that we have talked about this, and we even visited the site of the Healing Hearts Crisis Center, and that was supposed to be the goal of that center at the time that the legislature made its, you know, approved that, gave the land and the appropriations, is that there would be one interview room and that, that would be for victim purposes to take care of the victim, that one, but we have heard complaints, and, and I know that they're re-energizing their efforts to get back to that. Could you just give us an update on that? Could you just give us an update on that?
With regards to, yes, Guam Behavioral Health is houses the Healing Hearts Rape Crisis Center. Unfortunately, we, once a victim has agreed to be tested, they are brought in partnership with GPD to the Healing Hearts Crisis Center, and the medical examination happens for the gathering of evidence. We do have a room there, and at one point, the, the audio was not working. It is my understanding that that is being, that is corrected. I need to get to, I need to confirm that, and if I can get to you with that affirmation. But it is my understanding that we, it is working, the audio and the, the room. But I do, I would like some time to get back to you, just to reaffirm that the audio equipment at the time when you visited was not working at the time.
Right. All right. So, and there were promises that efforts would be made, I'm glad efforts are being made. I know that the goal was to try to move those out of, like, regular police interrogation rooms, dealing with these types of victims. And I know we've created a, kind of a separate place to do this, but I think that was supposed to be the ideal type of setting, or to be made into the ideal type of setting. So I hope that you are successful.
Madam, Madam Speaker, to that respect, you know, when a victim is traumatized and having to, whether it's at Guam Police Department, telling their, their unfortunate, what has happened to them, or at Healing Hearts, I'm not sure. I know that the trauma of having to collect the medical examination at Healing Hearts is really traumatic for the, for the, for the victims. And, and so, there really isn't a proper unfortunate, proper place. But if I can state for the record, the first time the victim tells the story is where it should, where it should happen. Because already, the act of getting the medical examination is traumatic enough, coming into our facility. Even though the facility is not as, you know, it's a little bit more homier than a, than, you know, a police station, or, or something like that, they have already going through that traumatic experience of having to go through the medical examination. And so I, it is my opinion that that collection of that one and only day interview should happen at the very onset.
If I could join in on that, Madam Speaker. I have participated, they call it MDTIs, multi-disciplinary team interview. Usually those, there's the Healing Hearts Counselor, someone from our office, it's usually a prosecutor, and sometimes an investigator, and then, of course, GPD is usually involved in that, Gino or one of his crew is involved in this. And the process works real good, I mean, is designed, you know, the, the victim is in a separate room, there's a, I'll call it a two-way mirror, where the rest of us squeeze into this tiny hall closet, is the best way to describe it, because it's, it's quite cozy in there. Then we've had, we've had audio problems. But the, what you have to understand, what that does, and that's what Ms. Ariola is talking about, we're bringing a victim in, these are, and I'm primarily talking about the child victim again, they come in there, they have to do the rape kit, the medical examination, which is very invasive, with pictures and use of speculums, and, and just all this other stuff, that they've never had to do before. You know, they're, we're not talking about adults who's already having to go see their OBGYN for regular checkups. These are young kids, and all of a sudden, they're put up in the stirrups, it's very, I'll call it violative, but, you know, it's a necessary product of the, of the prosecution. And then we tell them, okay, we need you to come back, and now we're going to do an interview. And you're taking this child back to the same place where they were just, you know, had to go through this very invasive procedure, and, and now they have to tell their story. But they're, that's critical, because the goal, and Gino will attest to this, is to, you know, to minimize the number of times the victim has to tell the story. And it's, and it's twofold. One is, it reduces the amount of trauma that these kids have to go through, but also, every time a child tells their, their, their version of what happened, there's subtle changes, and it, and it creates problems at a trial. You know, I mean, it might be a minor thing there, but, you know, a good defense attorney will challenge them on those changes. And so it becomes, creates problems for us on down the road. But yes, the MDTI, that's what the General was referring to, and we're trying to get into our office, it brings them to a different location. We, we're, we have people who are, they're called FEDI-trained forensic evidence interview procedures, it's a national program, and they conduct the interview in a very non-threatening, a non-leading format that can be used later on.
Just on the interview room, so, technology's just changed, and I know that everything's kind of hard, seemed hardwired in Healing Hearts. So our goal, obviously, is to use Wi-Fi and to just have a setup like that, so Basel doesn't have to squeeze in a room with a bunch of officers, can get tight. And the other thing is just, Healing Hearts is specific to victims of sexual assault, and all victims, you know, can benefit from giving a single interview that's going to be recorded and used as a statement, so that, that, it leaves a little bit more flexibility at any phase to do it, instead of just responding to a sexual assault.
Is that a police interview as well, or are they still going to be interviewed by police and then the Attorney General's office?
The idea would be the technology is set up so that anyone can be observing from online, a video conference essentially, to have a single person conducting the interview, but multiple people who are observing and able to ask questions of that during that interview. So if GPD were to participate, the other thing that we've seen, I believe, like, there are specialists to interview child victims, and sometimes you have to wait for, I think, FBI, or they'll fly someone in specific to conduct certain types of interviews in sensitive cases as well. So that's something that we have, the FEDI training is one, one training that's come out a few times, I believe the Coalition, Guam Coalition, Cynthia Cabot and her team have been able to bring them out. But it's in terms of, and I'm going to go back to this appropriation and the power of money, I mean, Healing Hearts, a revamp of the tech that they have there, and modernizing their interview room can go a long way, so we don't all have to go into that room, you know, we can conduct and participate remotely. That would be, that's our goal for our, our interview room.
Right, we did talk about that, and that was, I think, you stated your goal, was to get that type of technology. Chief, is that going to reduce the, the interviews on the GPD side and limit it to one, a victim interview or not? Is that, is, are you, is that consistent?
So I, I'd like to point out that there, there's always going to be that initial interview by the Guam Police Department, because whenever a victim presents himself at 2:00 in the morning at Central Precinct Command, we don't have the MDTI or the multi-discipline team interview, because that's not going to be, that's going to, not going to be possible to coordinate at 2:00 in the morning. So what we do is that we, we conduct that preliminary interview and establish the, the elements of the crime, and determine that enough probable cause exists to make an arrest of the perpetrator. So there are, there are times where we do the initial interview, and you're going to find that probably a greater majority of the cases always start with that initial interview at the Guam Police Department at the precinct. And then it's elevated up to DART, or Sergeant Gino's group, should there need to be a MDTI or a multi-discipline team interview. But the initial interview usually occurs at the patrol level. I would say that 80, if not 90% of our cases usually start at patrol.
Okay, so Attorney General, is your, are your efforts going to reduce the number of interviews or not? Sounds like we've got a patrol interview, a DART interview, Attorney General's interview.
That's, the goal is, after there's PC and it gets elevated, there will be a single after. That's correct.
Isn't that the case now?
Sometimes DART will interview, then they, we get all the police reports, and it just depends on the timing, Speaker. So if there's a book and confine, all these interviews are done, we have to file a magistrate's complaint, we haven't had a chance to interview the victim at that time, as Prosecutor Mal mentioned, then you go in, you have the meet and greet. So at every phase, there's an opportunity for an interview, a different statement. If, if GPD, if the preliminary, or the patrol officer has a written statement, or they have them prepare anything, and then DART has them also prepare a written statement, then now you have two written statements or two notes from different officers that may have inconsistencies, and that's what Basel's saying. The more times you have contact and notes, the greater opportunity for some inconsistency, which can then be used to impeach at trial.
Yes, that's what I thought we were trying to avoid. So I know this maybe can be a topic of one hearing by itself, but I thought that's what we were, our goal was. That's, in the other jurisdictions where you look at that being their goal, I think it's done at that first, maybe of patrol, of course, takes a complaint, but the, the interviews happen once, right? And the police?
Yes, so.
At one place, and, and the Attorney General's.
Right, so, so, in, in, in a perfect world, the practice should be, I guess, is that the, the initial interview by the police officer to establish the probable cause to make the arrest, but any subsequent interview should be an MDTI, and that should involve the AG's office, the Guam Police, Healing Hearts, especially if there's going to be an examination that's going to be conducted, because not all cases involve or require an examination.
Okay. Yes, all right. Then, so, the data that's reported on the Uniform Crime Report, right, goes, it gives us clear offenses cleared by arrest or solved for crime purposes, when at least one person is arrested, charged with the commission of the offense, and turned over to the court for prosecution. And I just want to clarify, when you say, when that report says charged with the commission of the offense, does that mean charged by the Attorney General? Or what does that mean?
No, that means an arrest, that's been made. We do not track cases by the Attorney General's office.
Okay, just want to make sure. And then it also gives, for the years, again, 2015 to 2019, well, the 2021 DART CSC demographic data sheet, there was a total of 153 CSC cases, most perpetrators were family in the household, we could get that from your sheet. CSC crimes in 2021, 41% were second degree, 30% first degree, 25% fourth degree, 19% third degree. But it, it looks like the arrests for rape is decreasing. Is that, yeah, but there, there were other statistics also reported to us from, this was by the Bureau of Women's Affairs, that said CSC statistics show from 2017 to 2020. So that's a different time period from what we are looking at from your, your data, and your data, I guess. And I just want to know, can you just give us the best sources of all of this data? I know that the court has its own data of the cases that come to them, but prior to that.
Right, so, so we, we, we get our data from our, our DART unit, but also data from the overall number of cases reported to the Guam Police Department. And so a lot of our, our data is actually electronic-driven, meaning we just go in and query the system. So we don't have a lot of the finer details that you're asking for.
Okay.
So if you wanted to know how many people had a prior arrest for CSC when they were arrested in 2019, if you had a prior arrest, the data won't tell you that, we'd have to go through that, and probably have to sit down and do a case-by-case analysis.
Okay. Well, our sentencing is based on things like that, so it's helpful for us to know if that's really the issue, right? Like, how many cases are, are, these are people who were prior arrested for the same type of case or not?
Right, and then we'd have to go back and look to, ask our PRD, our statisticians, you know, what the AG talked about, we may have one victim, multiple cases, I mean, multiple incidences.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna, we have, again, another section that we're going to discuss effectiveness of the penalties and sentencing, and, you know, post, post-sentencing. So for now, on this section, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning to the panel. We really appreciate your participation this morning. I guess I have a couple of questions for the Attorney General, if you can clarify, when you stated earlier that the single case can have multiple charges, and so, does that mean there is one defendant who's committed a crime multiple times? Or is it one offense, and there are multiple charges on that one offense?
It could be both, Senator. So first-degree CSC involves sexual penetration, second-degree CSC, sexual contact. Our office, if there's sexual penetration, would also charge out an offense based on sexual contact. So it could be a single incident that has both of those charges included.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the part about the 2011 law that basically removed the statute of limitations for criminal sexual conduct, and that you can't prosecute prior to that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So can a person who, who was, who, who had criminal sexual conduct, or rape or such, can they undergo civil action?
Yes, so first and second-degree CSC, and I believe that's, the archdiocese cases involve, they were filed after that statute was passed, because it does allow for civil liability. There are just, there are prohibitions on criminal, basically, you can't make something criminal before. So it's, if you did something, and then they say, oh, by the way, this is now a crime, the Constitution prohibits you from kind of making something, charging someone criminally for, it wasn't a crime at the time that it was committed. There aren't similar concerns in the civil arena.
So there are other remedies if they can't go through?
They would be able to pursue civil matter, that's correct.
Okay. And then this question is for the Chief, Chief, morning. So in regards to the arrests, so you said that there's a 43%, 43% clearance rate, but of course, we heard from the Attorney General that it's not reflective of really the situation. So I just want to get, maybe get some clarity in regards to, and then, of course, the, what you have been talking about, Ms. Uggan, about how many victims who don't go through the process, because it's very difficult to really advocate at the time for themselves, it's very difficult. So I guess the question is, do we know how much under-reporting goes on in regards to criminal sexual conduct? I mean, so currently, was it 1,800? Or what was the, the figure that, of individuals that have experienced it?
We came here with a number of 1,282. It's a little bit different from the, the number from the Speaker, and we'd have to reconcile our numbers. We're, we're about 33% off. But that's just the data that we got from our DART unit, based on the, the cases that they have on hand. I'd have to look at the Speaker's number, I don't know if it goes all the way back to 2016 also as well, and that's where maybe the disparity occurs. And also, like I said, we'd have to talk to our statisticians to find out, are we counting just the number of a victim who comes forward, who files a report? Or are we counting a victim who comes forward, who has, like, in the AG's statement, maybe has two types of CSC that occurred against one victim? So we'd have to look at the victims, the number of victims, versus the number of crimes that occurred against that one victim, because the victim may have experienced everything from a first, or up to a fourth-degree CSC, so that we count that one victim four times, and that's why there's a disparity in number, based on the, the crimes committed against a specific victim. So there's many different ways that you can look at data and statistics. So we'd, I'd have to sit with my Planning and Research Division to determine, because there's a big disparity between the clearance rate and the arrest rate. I, I believe we, we cleared a lot more cases, but we'd have to go back really and comb through these numbers and make sure that we're, we're talking about the same thing. You know, fortunately, one of my statisticians retired earlier this year, after 36 years or more. And then one of my others, other statisticians has been out for many, many months. So I'm actually just working with a newly hired statistician. We're trying to get, you know, even our UCR, make sure it's out and published soon.
Yeah, because I, I know that a lot of these victims, you know, when they go through the process, they're, they're victimized again by the system. And so I think it's really important that we, if we can streamline that process, and, you know, make it more amenable for, for them to come forward. Okay, so the other questions I have, beyond reasonable doubt, is this, are there other jurisdictions that use a different standard to prosecute these crimes? jurisdictions that use a different standard to prosecute these crimes?
No.
This is the only?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, and then the other question is in regards to recantation versus minimization. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, do we really have a good handle on the, the amount of criminal sexual conduct that is occurring? And to what extent can we minimize, reduce the amount? You know, especially given that it's difficult to, to go forward with a case, right, considering that there's a delay in, in reporting and difficulty in getting evidence? I mean, I think Guam is a small community, so we kind of know, kind of like the landscape of who are the offenders, offenders, right? So even if they don't get prosecuted, I mean, what kind of remedies are there that we can, you know, use to prevent further harms?
One thing I did want to, I didn't have a chance earlier to plug, is the Lonnie Kate Task Force. So that was set up to develop curriculum for prevention of sexual assault and adopted as curriculum in all of our schools. The curriculum itself was adopted, the task force, we were meeting before COVID, but the next step was really to get it part of our educators at EOG and DOE. And that's another opportunity potentially, because the more kids can know and learn about good touch, bad touch, reporting. I think there was an uptick in cases that were reported once they ruled the curriculum out. This is something out of Hawaii as well. So just as you're looking at possible solutions, you know, more resources to have that properly implemented throughout the schools here on the island would be another opportunity.
Yes, I've been in discussion with the Department of Education to hopefully adopt some curriculum to promote, you know, healthy relationships. But I guess the, I don't know if this is a time to ask about recidivism, but this is on the agenda, so do we have a number of offenders who repeat, or repeat offenders?
Oh, we are going to get there, Senator.
Okay, so I'll wait for my questions at another time. How about risk assessment? Is this something, are we going to talk about this now? Okay, risk assessment. So I know there was a law that was passed in 2020, and it basically mandated cooperation amongst the different agencies to develop a risk assessment and also implement. I just want to know what the status is on that.
Really got to that part of the agenda? Right now, we're just trying to deal with, from arrest, or, right, investigation of cases, to, to the AG's office, there's a, there's a gap of, well, not all cases that get arrested are, are charged by the AG's office. So just wanted them, that explanation on that part especially, and then the court's role in that, and behavioral health's role in that part. We're going to move on right away to the.
Okay, I'll withhold my questions till then. So thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to the panel.
Senator Perez. Senator Duñez.
Jesus Mase, Madam Chair, and I just, I think, and I hope, I'm glad you're all here. I hope we all understand that the opportunity with oversight, and I'm just going to go over something real quick, is for first and foremost, to give the public, you know, an update on what's going on. Of course, this issue is something that rises to a high degree of public concern. So I'm glad for all your participation today. Of course, when we talk about budgetary opportunities, I just want to remind that most of the time, this body is reacting to the request. So we would hope and encourage that any, any and all opportunities for us to fund additional programs in this particular area would be a matter of request as well. And that leads to my third question, because it seems, or my question, just one single question I have, it seems as though, and I'm glad Madam Speaker is operating in this fashion, it seems as though many times from this lawmaking body, when we introduce bills, it generally comes back to, we wish you would have discussed this with us, particularly maybe from defense or from the executive agencies and the like. I know Public Defender and others normally look to us to work maybe more collaboratively. So I just have one general question. In the report, which I think has been very thorough, that has been given to the public this morning of the interaction from arrest to prosecution or evaluation of the case all the way to the judiciary, is there anything that stands out right now in the current law? And you don't have to be that specific right now, but that you would recommend? Because really, if you, when you look at oversight, the real key operation behind an oversight for the legislative process is to look at what laws need to be either revised, changed, or what needs to be done in order to be able to give you the tools to do your job other than financial resources. So I just have that one general question. Chief, is there anything that, that, Chief of Police, is there anything right now that you could say that you need to work with any of our committees on in terms of specific legislation?
None from the Guam Police Department. We've been working with the CSC laws since I joined the Guam Police Department in 1987. So they seem to work, you know, the laws, the statute in place have the varying degrees of criminal sexual conduct.
So the statute, by your view at this point, is strong enough for you to carry out your mandates of, of arrest and procedure?
Yes, throughout my career, I've never seen anything really that glaringly stands out that says, we need to revamp the criminal sexual conduct statutes. They seem to have worked for our community.
AG Camacho, and maybe Basil.
Thank you, Senator. You know, we have supported, Speaker talked about some of the bills that have been introduced recently about eliminating self-safety valve for first and second degree, the repeat offender, I believe from other jurisdictions, that's a relatively new law. I know that there is a bill being considered to allow for victims of sexual assault to receive restraining order against their perpetrator, which we also would support, because that is something, it's easier for a victim of violent violence to get a protective order than it is for a victim of sexual assault. So we want to thank the body for addressing a lot of these concerns. And while we were coming here, I mentioned to Basil, one thing that would benefit us is, we are, our ability to have court decisions reviewed is set by statute in criminal cases. And there may be instances after a trial has started for us to get a judge's decision reviewed, and to make it express in the Title VIII. And an example of that would be if a judge grants us a motion to allow certain evidence to come in before trial, and then reconsideres that during trial, there's no avenue for us to have that decision reviewed. And if it's, if it's an acquittal, we never have that decision reviewed, you know, versus a defendant who can go through the process, if there's a conviction, they have the right of appeal and they can have it looked at. So I would just suggest, we are able to have the grant of a motion to suppress reviewed, but other types of motions that have impact our ability to prosecute cases, it's not as, as clear. So we would probably benefit from having that crystal clear as a matter of statutory right.
And, and that has been moved through the process within divisions of the Attorney General's office as a review and something that you see as being effective?
It's something that normally it's just Basil grousing afterwards, but it's, it is some, we just talked about it, we can propose some language, and it probably would just be expanding, allowing for us to appeal for motion to suppress to a little bit broader category of orders that we could appeal from.
Thanks, I'm sure the committee will take that up. So I just wanted to end with Ms. Visigo, Ms. Uggan, Mrs., if you would just share your thoughts from how the current viewpoint is from the judiciary in terms of the durability of the statutes to be able to carry out your mission, aside from budgetary, or whomever you choose to have.
You know, the Chief can answer, I think, specific to probation concerns, but I think from the judiciary's perspective, just overall, before this body for consideration is, and the judiciary's been before this body in support of it, Bill 311, which is the primary sponsor, Senator Blas, we do think that that would be a significant step towards advancing kind of just an overall review of the criminal, criminal statutory scheme, and would likely encompass most of what the, now it's, it's on a little bit longer timeframe, I think, than, you know, you know, I think it's a two-year timeframe going out, but it would encompass, I think, a vast majority of what we're discussing right now. And, you know, you know, I wouldn't presume to tell the commission how it would do that work, assuming that that, that bill became law, but you know, maybe these more immediate concerns could be addressed first. But that would be, I think, one of the, from the judiciary's perspective, something that could, you know, kind of align all of the concerns and kind of put them all in perspective across all of our functions. And then the Chief can talk specifically about probation concerns.
We have that at this time, Senator. Thank you.
And you know, that, that's so helpful to us. I'll use the balance of listening to get more information, because I think this has been very beneficial. But yeah, that, that makes sense. I mean, the clearinghouse approach to this, simply because this is where this disconnect comes down a lot of times, when people are frustrated with things in the community that are of high impact, and, and something that affects our families and our people directly. They, they want to see the systemic flow, right? Like, how, why, because otherwise, we sit back and tend to point fingers, right? And so that's why I see the value here, but I wanted to elicit that, so that seems very sensible in terms of the comprehensive review. That's all I have for now, Madam Chair. Jesus Mase.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly, thank you for all being here. You know, it's troubling, and I know that those of you that directly deal with these issues on a regular basis, I'm sure it's probably hard to understand, those of us in policymaking and in our community, I mean, every time I see and hear and read, watch the news, you know, and hear that those that are most vulnerable in our community are being offended by members within our community, and even more so disturbing family members. You know, and it's the question, how do we balance that? To what degree do we as policymakers, what can we put in place? What mechanisms can be put in place in the law? And then how we actually go about the, you know, getting the information, investigating the case, prosecuting these cases effectively? And then whether or not, does this change an individual that chooses to offend another member of our community sexually? Would that change anything in their mindset, in their psyche? That, well, if you do this, you're going to get in jail for 10 or 20 years? Would that prevent someone from taking, you know, harming an innocent child, for example, which we know there are men, women, children, sometimes elderly in our community are sexually assaulted? You know, would that change their mindset? Or do we as members of the community have a sense of, there's never a word of satisfaction, but of a sense that there's justice? You know, do we put these people away as long as possible? What harm do we bring to them for, for doing such a cruel? Sometimes certainly as a parent, unfathomable act against an innocent victim. And that's a challenge certainly for me in this side of the aisle, and just being a parent and being in our community, to see almost on a daily basis that this is a consistent crime, as if this is normal. And, you know, to hear some of the, the cases, of course, you can't do the specifics, but to think, you know, a parent, you know, if it was a boyfriend or whatever, girlfriend or whatever the case may be, partner, you know, if your child comes and tells you so-and-so did this to me, and a parent would choose the word of their partner, boyfriend, whatever the case may be, over a child, who in most cases you would never think would have the experience, you know, to have or make up something like this. I'm not saying it doesn't happen in rare cases, but probably in most cases. And then again, those of you that are more directly experienced with this could probably tell a little better that, you know, in most cases, you know, the victims are being truthful, and be the evidence that you're able to find on them to determine that these offenses have happened. And then what are we doing about it? And how do we go into the privacy of people's homes? You know, and then it's a place where you should feel the most safe. We should feel the most safe in our homes. And then what do you do if it's a family member, a friend of a family, or whatever the case may be, that, that is committing these type of crimes behind closed doors? And then how do we, as legislators, how do we in law enforcement, you know, properly do this, and then try to make this individual that's been victimized feel safe in a process where they probably feel they're continuously victimized? And then where's the justice in all of this? Which for me, I'm always looking, where's the justice? That if you've done something wrong, you need to pay for it. And as, as serious as is, you know, pay even more for it for something like this. So I know it's a very general comment, but I think it's something a lot of our people feel. You feel hopeless, especially, it might be somebody else's child, but it's still a child in our community, still a member of our community that we value. And, and it doesn't seem to be going away. And I don't know, you'd ask our Attorney General, Basil, you prosecuting, or our Chief of Police, who's been here for many, many, many years dealing with this. I mean, are we just seeing an increase, or is it just more reporting of it, or more cases being reported, you know, as it's always existed? Because it's bothersome, probably of all the crimes that happen, I'm not saying murder and other things, they're pretty serious, but these type of offenses that continue, you know, to hear that our crime statistics are so high on Guam in the small community that we call our island paradise, and yet, you know, we continue to see this happen.
Can I address something there, Senator? And I'll go back to something Senator Perez brought up earlier on a risk assessment. And one of the problems we are seeing more and more of, and there's nothing that I can see that anything can be done about it, it's our crowded homes. And the example I gave earlier.
Crowded homes.
The problem I gave earlier of, you know, the, the two girls, one now lives with grandma, because, you know, mom doesn't believe her, and the other one still lives with her mom. When I took that case to trial, what came out during the testimony was, in the living room of that house, there were eight people sleeping. And it's just, they didn't have any choice, you know, and we're having so many cases now where families, and this has been very public before, because of the economics, families, the children are having to move back into the house, to the family home, and they bring their children, they bring their spouse or their partner with them, and now a house that's designed to hold maybe six people has 15 people in it. And you get that many people into a house, bad things will happen, whether it's going to be a family violence case, a domestic violence case, or it's going to be a CSC case, because all of a sudden, you got more people living in the house. And that goes back to what Senator Perez raised about the risk assessment, what's going on in here. So we have, you know, the crowded houses. And one other thing I want to touch on, and it was a very difficult case, and I had to work with DART on this, is, you know, we had a situation, just, just to show you the difficulties we deal with on a daily basis. And, you know, we had a case where it was, the perpetrator was 84 years old, and it's Tata. And, and so you're, you're dealing with, you know, a young girl whose Tata has touched her. Well, you know, that's a crime. But now you're telling this young girl, well, we're going to put Tata in prison. And, and that just doesn't fly, you know, because, you know, all of a sudden, this 84-year-old man, we're talking about having to put into prison. And that causes tremendous unrest in the family. So we've had to deal with that, we've moved with the family, we're trying to resolve this, what's the best way to resolve that kind of a situation? And those are just the kind of things that we all deal with, and I know GPD can confirm this. I mean, those are the problems, that's the problems we deal with with our advocates, whether they're viral or they're our office's advocates, to deal with these kind of situations. And, and this goes back to Senator Duñez, I want to touch base on, you know, what, what law is missing out there? What do we need? And this is completely, it's related, but I'm going off, you know, I tend to do that, I can't keep track, is we need to provide counseling for our law enforcement people and our advocates. There, there needs to be an automatic mechanism. One of my functions as the Chief is to keep my prosecutors and my advocates sane, and it's a tough burden, because, you know, we, we live on the dark side of the island, and so we need to make sure that I have a mechanism where I can get counseling to these people when they need it. All right? And, and then they're not going to be having to pick up the tab. It's going to be covered because it's part of their job responsibilities.
I want to, our director for mental.
Madam Speaker.
I'll just ask the Chief of Police, and we can go to the next part. I'm just going to ask the Director of Mental Health, and then the Chief of Police, and we can go on. Please, yeah.
Thank you so much. I think what we need to do for the onset, and I appreciate Attorney Basil O'Malley's comment on crowded homes, and that's sometimes cultural and sometimes economically driven. But one of the things that I do want to mention and, and is the fact that these mindsets have to be changed from the very beginning, and from an early, early age. So I know Senator, Senator Brown and others have asked, is this just a, is this more of these sexual crimes happening? Or are we, are we becoming bolder as a community and reporting it, so now we're seeing it more? That, that would be determined. But I do want to talk about, how do we make a difference and, while we're dealing with the, these cases? So one of the initiatives that Guam Behavioral Health has launched, together with the Judicial Pacific Behavioral Judicial Council, is a program called EQ. It's a webinar about emotional intelligence. And this is going out right now throughout the government of Guam. It is. It is a webinar, which is about an hour long, that has been sanctioned by the Governor and Lieutenant Governor for one-hour admin leave for all Gov-Guam employees to conduct. And we encourage other private sectors who wish this, or other branches of government to also take part in this training. But really, it's not just an emotion, Guam Behavioral Health was tasked with the community outreach. And so, of course, we're going to start with the government of Guam, the executive branch. But there is a children and student EQ program that's run by Nadine Cepeda and the Guam Department of Education, her division. So all kids should be going through this emotional intelligence, or what is called EQ webinar training. And the nice thing about this EQ training is about recognizing your emotion at no matter what age you're at, you know, I mentioned the efforts in the school system, as well as the workplace, the community. And how do we turn those emotions into healthy reactions? And it's kind of sad that we have to get back to those kinds of basics, but that's what we're trying to do, is at the lowest, at the youngest age in the school system and in the workforce, how do we ensure proper relations building in the workforce or as children, interpersonal relationships? And so I offer EQ out there. It is a webinar. All executive branch employees have been given an hour administrative leave to take this webinar and recognize that we need to recognize and acknowledge our emotions, take a breath, and then how do we execute those emotions in the healthiest fashion? And so I say that because the folks that are conducting these terrible crimes to our kids are not, in my opinion, not having the proper recognition of the emotion whenever that came up, at whatever age, that feeling of wanting to do such terrible crimes to adults or children. They didn't know what to do with those emotions and how to properly channel those. And so Guam Behavioral Health is about the treatment side and the wellness. And so I offer that to the legislature and the judicial branch, of course, we're partnering with the EQ webinar. Counseling, of course, recognizing those dark temptations that we know deep down are not good, and having to seek the counseling and the proper treatment to gain some perspective, as well as counseling and services to ensure that I don't act on those dark emotions. You know, again, Guam Behavioral Health getting those treatments. And so emotional EQ, let's think about that, and let's think about how we can just permeate the entire island, private sector, governments, different government branches, and really getting back to basics and recognizing everybody's recognizing ability to recognize your emotion. And if there is an emotion that is on the dark side, how do we properly engage those emotions and turn it into healthy reactions so that we all, in whatever stage of life we're in, in the workplace or in school, bullying will be reduced, workforce violence will be reduced, and so forth? So that's what I offer. Thank you.
I appreciate your input in that. I know there's a lot to this issue we're not going to resolve this morning, but I understand the desire to want to facilitate the process to make it more workable for the victims. I mean, you know, we always hear about the rights of the perpetrators and what their rights are, but at the same time, I mean, we have to have a system in place that is there to support the victims, especially because these are young, in some cases, young children. I mean, you look at some of the ages that these type of crimes are happening, and I mean, it's reprehensible. You know, you think that people would know that there are certain things you don't do, but they still do them. And I wanted to ask the Chief, you've been at this for many years, what are you seeing the trend? Are you seeing more cases now, or are we just reporting it more now? And then sometimes even reporting it doesn't become a solution, because, I mean, people have to go through so many challenges to determine, and then, you know, do they go back into that same home environment? Then what happens? Even if we put these people away, what if there, we've seen cases of repeated offenses of these things happening in our community? What do we do with them? You know, what do we do with those type of offenders?
Okay. I'd like to add to the conversation that, you know, if you see a rise in the number of cases reported to the Guam Police Department or to any other agency in criminal sexual conduct cases especially, I think that we have to look at, what are we doing to encourage the reporting, right? And so the AG kind of talked about maybe some curriculum at the school level, you know, the good touch, bad touch, training. But when you see victims come forward, because we believe that criminal sexual conduct is really underreported. And so we see that with our victims, because when they come forward, they're telling you about incidences that in 2022 that happened in 2020 or 2021. And so having them have that courage to come forward and say, I won't be a victim anymore, I won't let this happen to me anymore, I'm going to stand up for myself and come forward and say, enough is enough, I need you to know that this is what's happening to me. And so, you know, I admire the bravery of CSC victims, because they're living victims, you know? Unlike a homicide victim, you know, others have to tell the story. These victims have to tell their own story in their own words, that is very traumatic and very painful, and they have been violated. And so when I see that we have higher reports of criminal sexual conduct, that means that our outreach is working, the programs that we have in place is working, the reporting is working, and more victims are saying, you know, I don't want to be a victim anymore, I want to come and tell you what's going on. And to Basil's point about us seeing the dark side of the island and the vicarious trauma that our officers go through, we have programs in place, you know, I guess we're just one of the fortunate groups of people, because there is a Department of Justice grant that we applied and received. It's the Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act, the LAMO grant. And so we've established a full-blown peer support counseling group, and we've used them, you know, to provide intervention to our officers in officer-involved shooting, crisis response, like the incident up at Tulares Point with the baby and the mother. You know, those are very traumatic experiences for our officers, and so we have a crisis response team. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center Director Ariola and her team has been very helpful in our program and standing it up and working with our people. Senator Duane, you asked, what can we do better? You know, if there's anything, I've always wanted to explore the possibility, and Senator Bloss, you remember this? We used to have in-house staff psychologists for our officers, right? Because we deal with vicarious trauma on a day-to-day basis. We see things, experience things, and respond to things that we don't ever want anybody else to respond to unless, you know, you've been properly trained, because we've seen the dark side, like Basil said, of Guam.
Well, I appreciate the work that you do. I mean, it's unfortunate now that even our children, we're almost having to arm them with how to protect themselves against sometimes their own family and the adults in the community. I think it's a very sad reality of where we're at. I just wanted to ask a quick question, Attorney General. You were collectively talking about when you do these interview or interviews of this victim to try to minimize, you know, the re, having to go over and over again to repeat their story, depending on what stage they are in the investigation. And you want to consolidate this in one room and, you know, be able through technology, also be present without it being cramped in this other side of this mirror. Are you able, when you do that, to ask the questions that you need of that victim? Or does the victim ever know or see who else is listening in on their conversations so that when the time comes, you have to prepare a case or whatever, you have the information you need? So that's not something the victim has to continuously rehash? How would that process now with our modern technology be set up so that you will be able to get the information you need? And like I mentioned, the victim doesn't have to keep rehashing over and over this very traumatizing situation?
You know, that relationship really is formed when GPD responds, and that connection with GPD, we've been trying to minimize on the advocate side, how many people that they interact with.
Sure.
Because the more people that they talk to, it just gets confusing. And, yeah, so to the extent that we set up this room, the concept would be, you send someone in who already is trained to conduct the examination that's based on age. So an adult victim is going to have a different dynamic than a young child. And for a young child, you're going to want someone who's trained specifically to interview those child victims. But the concept would be that everyone could log in, and they may not meet the prosecutor immediately, that might be later on, you know, Basil likes to set up a meet and greet. But the initial interview should be done with someone that they've trusted from early on. So whether it's a DART officer, whether it's someone in our office, and then just to maintain that contact as long as we can for consistency.
And what we have done before with Healing Hearts, with the MDTI, they, you know, especially regardless of the age of the victim, they always factor in breaks. You know, after maybe 20, 30 minutes, they say, okay, let's just take a little break here. And actually, what's going on is the person who's conducting the interview comes out, gets other information and other questions from the other people who are observing, then goes back in after the break, you know, go get water, go use the bathroom, whatever excuse they come up with. They're very good, they're very well-trained, and then they go back in and they continue with the interview. And then that's normally how we're doing it, and I'm hoping that's what we'll continue to do in the future. We just continue to just take these breaks.
Okay, I appreciate the insight, because I was just kind of curious how that could be addressed to, as you mentioned, minimize the amount of time a victim has to continue to tell their story and yet still be able to get the appropriate, you know, appropriate information that you need to actually pursue a prosecuted case. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to ask these questions.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Frank Bloss and invite him to, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the panel for being here. And I sat here and I looked back at my big days of law enforcement and some of the guys that I worked hand-in-hand with criminal sexual conduct cases, and, yeah, this has always been a perennial question, how do we reduce this? And unfortunately, from this body or from anybody, we can't legislate morality. And I bet you that if we had this conversation with the cameras off, with a couple of cold beverages to our liking in our hands, and, you know, just be open about it, there'll probably be some draconian measures to be able to, that we'd like to be able to institute to bring these things down. But that's not the case. I appreciate, Madam Speaker, your ability and your opportunity to be able to have this discussion in a progressive state, and, you know, from arrest all the way up until, you know, hopefully, no recidivism in this case. But unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be the case in many cases. And I appreciate there was a conversation. And while, yes, we recognize that there's a bill before this body to be able to comprehensively look at the titles with regards to criminal procedure and criminal code, I do continue to encourage that if there's anything we can do immediately, I appreciate, you know, Mr. O'Malley and Mr. Camacho, you know, and some of the suggestions that you may have. Maybe that doesn't necessarily have to wait for this commission to be instituted. You can, you know, if it's something that we need to do now, I, you know, will work on that for you. And you're right, Mr. Camacho, as was stated by Chief Ignacio here, I remember back in 1984, when we first rolled out a program similar to the program today, you know, don't touch me. And we saw the increase, almost instantaneous, almost overnight, once we brought it into the education system, the number of reports that came in, and it was very alarming, it's not so much the number of reports, but it was prevalent, and it continues to be prevalent. And we could have had this conversation in 1985 and still come up with the same concerns. I recognize that today there are a number of more different programs that can assist that we didn't have back in 1985, but not to take anything away from what everybody's doing here, but we still have the problem. Okay, again, I think that for the most part, what our conversation here is about morality more so than, you know, what our challenges are in the legal and, you know, the system, you know, with regards to the programs that we can offer. But in line with keeping, you know, with this hearing, I just wanted to ask a question, you know, maybe primarily to Chief Ignacio and to the staff here. Are there challenges with regards to, you know, conducting, okay, you know, we've gone past, this person has walked in already to a precinct, okay? This victim has walked into a precinct. What are some of the challenges that you have from the law enforcement side in being able to conduct some of these investigations?
I think, Senator, our biggest challenge right now is personnel, getting enough officers to adequately investigate, you know, all the cases that we deal with. I mean, there's a myriad of cases from family violence, sexual assault, domestic violence, theft, burglary, robbery, you know? We run the whole gamut of Title IX, drug investigations, street-level drug use, organized crime drug use. There's just so many things that we, the Guam Police Department investigates, and we're the primary law enforcement agency in Guam. And so, you know, having the adequate number of staff. But I will tell you that, you know, a big chunk of our criminal sexual conduct cases are solved at the patrol level, and those that cannot be solved are definitely referred to the DART unit. And, you know, as you see, DART is actually Domestic Assault Response Team. So we've kind of folded now the responsibilities of investigating sex crimes or criminal sexual conduct into the domestic assault, which covers domestic violence and family violence. And, you know, Sergeant Gino alluded to earlier, and I talked about, when I worked at Peters Plaza, I was actually assigned to the Sex Crimes Unit. That's all I did, day in and day out, for two years, investigate sex crimes, not domestic violence, not family violence, not robbery, not aggravated assault, sex crimes and sex crimes only. I work with Agnes Bloss, she was my partner for many years, in the Sex Crimes Unit, and Joanna Leva.
Just for clarification, and when you say the crimes are solved, in other words, you've made an arrest and you've transferred them.
Right, yeah. Crime solved meaning, and arrests means, yeah.
Yeah. Just for the listening public, that doesn't necessarily mean, crime solved on your end doesn't mean, doesn't necessarily mean conviction on the other end?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
That's a whole different process.
Clear of that, because, you know, I'm sure that, you know, from there, the challenges now with Mr. Camacho and your outfit with the Attorney General's Office, what are some of the challenges that you have with regards to the investigation portion of?
It's not necessarily, GPD does a good job on the front end, it's just really maintaining the cooperation of the victim throughout the process and getting them to be willing to go and to testify potentially at trial and to face their accused, which is not as easy as you would think it would be, but based on the family dynamics that we've been talking about kind of at length here, and the relationship between the victim and the defendant, it is, I mean, I hate to say, the cases where there are acute cases or it's a stranger situation, those are the ones that go to trial, because you have a victim who's, their principles are they going to go, but now all of a sudden, you have a relationship with, Chief Prosecutor O'Malley said, your grandpa, right? You're going to go testify, get your grandpa, and he's going to go to jail for 15 years. That just makes the willingness and the part of the victim to proceed. So they'll get a statement, but then turning that statement into trial testimony is where we get, we encounter issues.
Okay, thank you very much. In this process, to be able to help with an assessment to be conducted, is, are there any questions or are there any means of collecting data of the perpetrator, not the perpetrator's socioeconomic background, religious background, and the like?
Yeah, we don't. I know we don't collect that data, like, once, I mean, our job is just to investigate, make an arrest, but we do have access to their But we, we do have access to their criminal background as well, though, so that may be an area that we can help, you know, and provide information on Mr. so and so's got two arrests, you know, may not be criminal sexual conduct, but may be violent crime, right? Or maybe he does have a prior criminal sexual conduct arrest. But I think that information, though, is, is made available to the prosecutor because we provide the report. One of the things we provide them is also a rap sheet of the individual. The rap sheet is just the number of arrests that a person has, a person has been arrested in the past.
And the reason why I bring this up is because I, I'm going to go back to the many years, the decades, I can already say it's decades, you know, since the last war badge, is, is there, there was, you know, conversation of, you know, incorporating line of questioning with regard to socioeconomic background, religious background and whatnot, as a tool, as a means to be able to entice, if you will, you know, a, a confession, okay? But then I think it's, it can be valuable down the road so that in our assessment of this individual, if we're talking about somebody who's just got no more values, you know, has never been introduced into that, I mean, you know, has no educational, educational background, the things that people don't politically, they don't want to hear us talk about, but we need to, let's just put it out on the table, okay? That could assist in the progression of this individual, okay? And I recognize in as far as Mr. Morrison and your responsibility there, you know, but it's making sure that we're as fair and accurate and succinct as possible to prove the innocence or the guilt of an individual, okay? Or the reasons why. And I think that if we can delve into the reasons why an individual has committed a crime, that could help in reducing, you know, the recidivism. And, and just a matter of suggestion, I, this, this is something that I know we've instituted, we instituted it many times ago. I, I know this because it was tried, it was in one of my cases where it was put, put before, you know, the Ninth Circuit. It's perfectly legal to ask them, you know, if they go to church on Sundays, okay? But, you know, that said, is, is appreciate the conversation here, and I'm going to sit back. Mr. Morrison?
Senator, if you wouldn't mind, I have some, I'm not going to talk to you, but I'd take some impressions of what I think has been taken as part of this. Like, um, would you like to spill that a little? Right. Senator, I did have some information on socioeconomic backgrounds. In the last two years, my office got 91 of these types of cases. And I can tell you that in all those instances, the defendant would have been indigent for our office to be appointed, found by a judicial officer to not have the means to hire a private attorney. So obviously, if someone committed one of these crimes, that's on them, they're not a victim of circumstance. But I can tell you that there are common threads that run through these types of cases. And extreme poverty is definitely one of them, chronic drug abuse is one of them, and a lack of education is one of them as well. I think if more was done on any of those three areas, we might have different outcomes on the charges that get made here.
I appreciate that because, you know, and not to take away from many of the programs and, and, you know, that, that exist, but I sometimes see there are program, the programs that do exist sometimes lack the ability to ensure that the conversation, when you're having this conversation with this individual, it's at a level that this individual can comprehend, okay? And I know that there's been efforts to be able to fix that. And, and I appreciate, you know, a lot of it, it's just that sometimes we tend to forget that, that, you know, when you want to have an intelligent conversation, you have to make sure that this individual understands, first off, what the ramifications of his actions are, and, you know, what, what ways, you know, or what means are available for this individual to get the help that they, that they need or that they're, that they're seeking. I, that could be a conversation down the road, and I appreciate the progression of this hearing. I just wanted to bring that up because, you know, again, I'm sitting back and I'm, I'm listening to this and, you know, a few decades ago, you know, I'd be sitting here with you all, trying to explain the actions to this body here. And I, so I can, I, I, I appreciate it and I recognize all of your efforts. So I want to thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blass. I know we're trying to limit to one topic, but the, I want to also recognize the presence of the Department of Corrections. Ms. Tajama, would you please introduce yourself?
Good morning, thank you, Speaker. My name is Teresa Tajama, and I work with the Department of Corrections. But I just wanted to provide some feedback on another realm with regard to everything that I'm hearing being discussed today. Before I move to the Department of Corrections, I have--
Yeah, we're not there yet, we're going to move to that section soon, but we're talking right now on arrests versus charging.
I would like to talk about that, yes, on, on that point, is that when we're talking about the arrests and as far as with the perpetrator, and I hear so much talking about the victim, one, one agency that is not here, which I may be able to provide some feedback, is the BOSA, Bureau of Social Services Association. So I know we've talked about DART, GPD, Guam Behavioral Health, the Attorney General's Office, but I think that part of that process that would be most helpful, if we want to be victim-centered, is to have the, I call it Department of Children's Services, but to have the social worker here and involved. So I think at one point, whenever the victim walks into the police department, and we want to try to assemble the multidisciplinary team, that maybe within a timeframe, I'm not sure how this works, whether it be, you know, we're talking about urgency, and then we're talking about trying to reduce more trauma and revictimization, is that when we try to assemble this team of the players, is that there be a timeline, maybe, I don't know, 24, 72 hours to 72 hours where it would take place, but that the social worker or the CPS investigator will take the lead. Because if we want to be victim-centered, we, this is an issue of dependency and neglect. I'm hearing people, they're living in poverty, there is overcrowding in the home, all of these are neglect issues that may lead to this, that are factors contributing to the abuse. So when we're trying to take the, the approach where we want to, to help the family, that is one thing that we can do side by side or in tangent with this criminal prosecution. Another thing that would be effective as far as with the Healing Hearts or the evaluation and interview that they're talking about, is that, yes, that we do commit to having a skilled forensic facilitator and interviewer, and, and that we make sure that we engage all parties, but that CPS, Child Protective Services kind of takes the, the lead role in, in making sure that along that process, that we guide the victim along and the family work hand in hand with the perpetrator. So it's kind of like a twofold, but multidisciplinary. And another thing that I think would be helpful as far as is helping them, supporting them, is that, that they receive regular, constant feedback, whether, yes, guess what, you know, we are going to prosecute, or, yes, we have a hearing on this date, or, you know, we want to put you, set up some services for you so that you can be receiving counseling, and that this is what's going on. And then another thing is that they do feel supported. When they do recant, or when they fail to, an expert in social services or CPS knows, we, we know that children are resilient, they, they, the reason why they don't disclose is because they don't have an individual whom they feel that they can trust, who would have their best interests at heart. So we have to work on those skills with our workers so that when they build that, establish that trust, then these victims will come forward. We have had some progress, but I think it's a continuous thing where it takes someone with that skill set and training to be able to work with them along the way, along, even when we're saying, yeah, you know, we have this person and we knew, but they recanted. So what, what along that process are we doing to assure them that we have not forgotten that we're on it, that we're supporting them, that we believe them, that we're doing the best we can to make sure that, that we are providing them the protection that they need? So--
Could you just clarify, who has that skill set that you're describing?
Well, it's supposed to be the, the agency that we're talking about would be Healing Hearts, and they fall under Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Clinic. But it, it could also be that, that could be re, it can be looked at or reevaluated under the Bureau of Social Services, well, with Bureau of Social Services or with Vero. So it could be a nonprofit, or it could be another agency that could oversee that. And so there would be a neutral party from BOSA and, and from CPS and all the other agencies. And another thing that I did want to say, that whenever the multidisciplinary team convenes, is that, yes, that the child or the victim on the other side is made aware of the process, what to expect, and that at any moment, they, they too, that, that other people are observing, and that they also have questions that they may want to ask of them. So the victim may, depending on the skill set, like we said, may have some questions about the perpetrator that those responsible should be able to ask as well. That help, could help provide assurance and comfort to them and establish that trust and know that, yes, you are competent to follow through with my case because I am the victim and I would like to see this done. I would like justice done in that, in that regard.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that input as well, and thank you for joining us today. And so thank you to all of you again. The, the concern is that we, yeah, we wanted to see the data first because the number, we, you, we've heard it all morning, it's underreported, these types of cases, criminal sexual conduct. Underreported, yet the amounts of, the numbers of arrests are much more than the numbers that are being prosecuted. We wanted to find what were the gaps and the recommendations. And I do appreciate the recommendations that you've made and, and even gone further to say, how do we prevent those in the first place through other measures? So thank you. And all of this will be taken under consideration, I'm sure, by all of my colleagues. So we've got three other topics, but I'm going to condense them because of time. And so what we're trying to get to, we, we had broken out, we want to know about penalties. But we want, all of the other topics are related to, we want to reduce recidivism and we want our community to be safe. So how do we get there through penalties, through treatment? Are our assessments enough currently to get us to where we need to be in, in either of these things? And, and all of this, you know, we want to know pre-trial, post-trial, post-release from sentence. And I know they're, they've done their sentence, so they're done. And we've got a criminal sexual registry, registry in place, that's supposed to help us to monitor them after release. But, but we, we, I don't know, at least it's my understanding that we continue to see recidivism. So I'm going to have each of you maybe make your own presentations. I've got a million topics I wanted to really hone in on and, and discuss. For example, there's research on mandatory sentences, right? So in Guam, in the criminal sexual conduct cases, we've got some mandatory sentences. And there are arguments against mandatory sentences, right? They don't, there's a whole list of arguments against mandatory sentences. But yet, we continue to see, you know, our reaction is, well, we need to increase the penalty, that's the only way to stop it. But I think there's also research that shows for criminal sexual conduct, that is not going to stop it. And so it's a different type of case, it requires a different type of assessment, of a different type of treatment. And do we have these treatments available on Guam? And if not, are our judges aware that we are not able to fully treat these people? And what are we going to do when they are released into the community? Or how, how safe or dangerous are they prior to trial, right? So all of that was supposed to be assessed with, we passed a law earlier to require just that, a very particular criminal, I mean, sorry, assessment on, let me just get This was enacted in February 2020. It was a team that was supposed to be composed of Superior Court, Parole Board, Police Department, Guam Behavioral Health, to develop a standardized procedure for measuring the risk of criminal sexual conduct, recidivism, for identifying potential for rehabilitation, and, you know, what barriers there were to that on Guam. And they had, so during those, the discussions prior to that law being enacted, there, there was testimony from DOC saying, it's essential that the assessment evaluation be completed at the pre-sentencing level, where a plan can be developed, a discharge planning, now, and that discharge planning or release planning needs to occur at intake as well as the need for a well-developed plan for treatment. Everyone was pretty aware of what's the best practices for this type of thing. I don't think it was clear at that time that there was any truly effective treatment. And there was definitely, I think everybody agreed, that there was definitely very limited, if any, resources available to people on Guam. So I just want to get an update on this and, and tie it in, if you, in your respective departments, with mandatory sentences then. Because we get pushed back on mandatory sentences in large part because of what they found, that sentences are often greatly disproportionate to the severity of the defense, of the offense. Removing discretion from judges shifts the discretion towards the police and the prosecution. And I've heard this from prosecutors as well. Because the sentence is involved, that really plays a part in whether they're going to prosecute or not, right? They have no discretion, it's only, it's either you go with that mandatory sentence or we don't prosecute. And there's no in-between for them, for prosecutors either. Punishment is not particularly effective as a general deterrent, and that's, I think, the case here. Okay, and so in the interest of time, I'm going to then call on the, I think I'm going to start with the judiciary, if you, or, and behavioral health, if you could report on the status of implementing this particular type of assessment and, and, and I also want to, I ask very particularly for data on average sentence length for all sexual abuse offenders, average sentence length for, of an offender convicted of sexual abuse offense carrying a mandatory minimum penalty, average sentence length of an offender convicted of sexual abuse offense not carrying a mandatory minimum penalty, percentage of CSC offenders relieved of mandatory minimum penalty at sentencing, and the degree of the offense. And there is a law in Guam that, that says that for all cases where they go below the mandatory penalty, they're supposed to report to us. And so I had also asked for that. I don't think we've been getting those reports, and I hadn't seen them, so we had also asked for that. So let's just begin with the judiciary, oh, oh, sorry, behavioral health?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Centers, we do not conduct risk assessments for re-entry to the community. I think that's, that was like a major discussion on whose responsibility is that to minimize the risk of repeat offenders, especially somebody who has been, served their sentence and ready for release. We do not do risk assessments of that regard. It's very similar, the similar to we, how we do not do fit-for-service kind of assessments. So the question is, who has the capacity and has the training to do those risk assessments for release? And I, I am told, and, you know, the Department of Correction, parole, or Department of Correction representatives here could probably talk to that, but there is a, an re-entry assessment tool called ORAS that my understanding, ORAS, is my understanding is the probation, parole and case management of Department of Corrections has had training on. parole, and case management of Department of Corrections has had training on. And so maybe they can speak to that when they speak to this. We do do psychological evaluations for those who have processed through the judicial system and land at Department of Corrections. As you all know, the Guam Behavioral Health has since taken over the mental health and drug programming at Department of Corrections. However, we only treat the symptoms. For example, depression of somebody who have sexual, criminal sexual misconduct, that is, serving their sentence at Guam Behavioral Health, and probably in depression or suicide watch, thought of suicide, harm for themselves or others. So that's when the Guam Behavioral Health programming at Department of Corrections kicks in. But with regards to reducing the risk of repeat offenses, especially at the time when the public is so concerned about re-entry, when they've already sent, served their sentence, is not a, an assessment that we do. Actually, it's a very big concern, I think I mentioned this in the last roundtable that I attended, I know you've had several, that the liability of, of who's going to be held responsible for saying this person is already fit to be released to the community. So, just so you know, we do not do that kind of assessment.
But has your agency done any research or participated in any group discussion on getting to the risk, the type of risk assessment that should be used on Guam for criminal sexual conduct cases?
I know I had discussion with our psychologist that is housed at Guam Behavioral Health, Dr. Angela Lego, and the only assessment or knowledge that she has is that ORAS training. And it is a re-entry type of assessment, and I am told that Department of Corrections' parole and possibly case management, which I think Therese can speak to, has that kind of training.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to the judiciary. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, notwithstanding, and in terms of the judiciary, we have not been a party to any collaborative meetings with the other agencies. And not that it's any excuse, but the statute was passed, came into effect a month before the pandemic. And so, but internally, we have had discussions regarding risk assessments. And just some statistics that we have, and this is from the sex offender registry. So there are 1,135 registered sex offenders on it. And out of the 1,135, 51 offenders are, have been, have multiple offenses. Two, 63, 63, I'm sorry, the offenders with two cases. And so, and then we have nine offenders with three cases, and two offenders with four cases. And so, and so anyways, regarding those statistics, we have three that were, that have since been deceased, four that are, have been deported, six that are on parole, seven that are incarcerated, 24 are currently, they completed their term of supervision, so they're unsupervised, and seven have relocated. So there are 37 out of those 51. And so those are the statistics right now that we have with the sex offender registry. As for the probation division, we have currently, none of our, those on probation are repeat offenders, and they are referred for counseling services. So they have been participating in that. What the Director of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center was referring to is the Ohio Risk Assessment System, a series of tools that is used within our system. And so the pre-trial, the ORAS, as it's called, pre-trial is to assess, you know, bail, and then we have the community supervision tool, that's if someone's going to be sentenced to a term of community supervision. You have the re-entry tool, and that is for individuals who, you also have the prison tool for individuals who are sentenced into a term of imprisonment, and the re-entry tool in terms of individuals that are preparing for release. And so, so those are the system of tool, the tools that are currently used for everyone, pretty much general assessment tools.
Okay, so note tool, particular to sexual conduct offenses.
I'm going to refer you to our client services and family counseling.
At the last, so the Guam Behavioral Health previously testified that some of the tools, testing and assessment tools that could be used to monitor progress of treatment were the HARE Psychopathy Checklist, the Minnesota Sex Offender Screening Tool, the Rapid Risk Assessment for Sex Offenders Recidivism, and Hormonal Agents, and Cognitive Behavioral Techniques. Dr. Patricia Tyminglo from the Department of Corrections also testified that psychos-physiological testing plays an essential role in assessment of sex offenders, and outlined that a comprehensive psychiatric evaluation would include reviewing available police reports, criminal history, collecting available collateral sources of information to verify information provided by the individual, detailed sexual history, history of violence as a youth and adult, and careful evaluation of deviant sexual arousal patterns. Dr. Tyminglo further stated that it's essential, that the assessment be completed at the pre-sentencing level, and I read that part already. Dr., Dr. Bos.
Hi, thank you, Madam Speaker. So with the courts, what it is, is they're, generally speaking, right, research has yet to identify a single best instrument for assessing the risk of sex offenders. So what clinicians do is we use a multitude of assessment tools. For example, we use the, there's juvenile, and there's adult, and then a lot of what you're talking about are, they are found in psychosexual assessments. So we use different types of tools, like the Eraser, the Sorag, the J Soap, the Static 99, which is probably one of the most popular tools, the Stable 2000, which we need to upgrade to the Stable 2007. The Aseba is more comprehensive, and they do a lot of assessments on, you know, going back to childhood. And then the psychosexual evaluation. So they use these different risk assessments in a psychosexual evaluation. At the court, we have Dr. Rapadas, who does sexual evaluation, and Ms. Charaglov, who is currently off island. But Ms. Charaglov is our only certified offender treatment specialist at the court, and I'm not sure if there, there are others who are trained in other agencies that maybe they can speak to about that. But we do provide treatment, and for, in terms of treatment efficacy, for a non-prison-based sexual offender treatment, CBT, that you mentioned, or, and Dr. Tyminglo mentioned, cognitive behavioral treatment is the treatment of choice, and that is what we're using, you know, at the courthouse. Now, in terms of, I think it was a comment about sex offender treatment, in terms of recidivism, so offenders who undergo treatment, they have a 17% recidivism rate after five years, and a 22% recidivism rate after 10 years. Now, for offenders who have no treatment, it's 10% higher. So it'll be 25% after five years, and 30% after 10 years. So in terms of treatment efficacy, yes, there's a high rate of recidivism, but if they are, there is a significant number that do not reoffend. And so these different instruments that I just spoke about, they, they speak to different issues, and that's why with the, they speak to different background issues. And so the rationale for using multiple assessment tools is to increase reliability, and also to capture deviant behaviors that one assessment tool may have missed, you know. And that all is shown in a comprehensive psychosexual evaluation that is conducted at client services. We see clients who are ordered to our office, who are court ordered to our office, and we provide treatment to clients who are court ordered to our office, to, through like either a plea agreement, or a court order off the bench from the judge.
Do you see any clients in DOC?
We have some clients who are in DOC, but we don't typically see them unless they're in our office until they're released.
Until they're released?
Correct. We don't provide treatment to incarcerated clients, we do assessments if they're ordered.
Okay. And so the statistics you gave us are for Guam, your treatment, you're saying? With treatment, 70, the recidivism, 70% after five years?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is just, if you take a look at the research on recidivism, I can give you the, I can give you the exact notation.
Okay, so this is general nationwide?
Generally speaking, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you know for your treatment?
I'm sorry, Speaker, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, do you know for, do we have any statistics for Guam?
Can I refer to probation for recidivism rates?
Well, on your treatment?
So in terms of treatment, I don't have that exact number, but I can give you, I can get back to you on, on those exact numbers. Now, the thing for sex offender treatment, it's not a cookie cutter treatment, like we have domestic violence treatment, right? There's usually evidence-based curriculums that go 20, 30, sometimes eight modules or eight sessions. With sex offender treatment, it's a continual assessment. So initially, if they're recommended for like a low-level intervention, that can go for eight sessions. Now, if they're, depending again on the results of the assessment, if it's a high-level intervention, they can go for two years, and then aftercare for another 18 months. So it's pretty comprehensive in terms of treatment.
Okay. So these might be for people who are out on pleas, plea arrangements, or people who are out on, I don't know, what else would it be? Pre-trial? No?
No.
Any, just that? Pursuant to a plea agreement? And then, do, it was Dr. Rapadas who gave us the recommendation that sexual offenders needed a particular assessment, or more, you know, a more precise assessment tools, for sure. All right.
So Dr. Rapadas uses three of the six assessment tools that I mentioned, and then Ms. Charaglov uses another three, and depending on their age, depending on the level of offense, that also determines the type of risk assessment tool they utilize.
All right. So that was the goal, was to reduce recidivism. If these tools are effective at assessment and the treatment's effective, then, that across the board, behavioral health, yeah, everyone else involved, DOC especially, would be able to use the same things. Because that was the issue, was the parole board at the time had released somebody in criminal sexual conduct offense, they were allowed by their terms of their, you know, sentence to be released at that time on parole, but, but the recidivism was immediate almost, right? Well, anyways, and we're trying to prevent that, so we want those tools available at parole, we want them available at DOC where they are needed as well. Okay, we'll go to the Attorney General.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to touch base, I'm going to cover a couple of items that you raised, and I'll just talk quickly, then I have to move on. I have a conflict with my schedule. I am, you know, when I was first preparing for this public hearing, you know, I was talking, the officers going, "I really don't think a recidivism rate is that bad or that high." And SORNA has just confirmed that. I mean, 51 out of 1,135, that's a very, very low percentage, which is, you know, confirms my gut feeling. And what Ms. Bosz was talking about as far as the counseling, in all of our plea agreements, there is always, always a component that they must go get, be assessed by client services, and they must participate and complete any counseling. So whether, whatever the charge might be, but especially in sex offending cases, that's always a component, that they have to go in there and get the counseling, because we do believe that is beneficial, and that was confirmed by Ms. Bosz just a second ago.
Just real quick clarification, A.G. O'Malley, is the, if there's different assessments, so if it's a sex offender case, you want to ask for a psychosexual evaluation and not just a general evaluation, because it'll come out, if it's not specific, we just, we do general evaluations. The only ones who are qualified to do the psychosexual would be Dr. Rapadas and Ms. Charaglov.
Okay. Well, our pleas just say, go to client services or Guam Behavioral and be assessed. And so we kind of leave it open, you know, for them to, if we need to fine tune that, I'm open. We can work on that. I just want to touch base quickly on the sentencing and the range, and I know, I'm happy Mr. Morrison is sitting quietly over there, but he is sitting here, and he's a regular partner in a lot of my cases, unfortunately, and because he's very good at what he does. And in sentencing range, that's why I want to address that as part of the mandatory minimums. The true mandatory minimum we have that guides a lot of ours is the first offender, first-degree CSC, which has a mandatory minimum of 15 years. That is intact, leave that alone, and just, we can work with it. The beauty of not tying our hands with a mandatory minimum, it gives us opportunity to work out plea agreements, because, and I've talked briefly earlier about the importance of a plea agreement to avoid further traumatizing the victim. And we need a plea, and the example I'll give is the sentence that was just done last week, where we had a range of three to 12 years. Well, the three years is to, and Mr. Morrison can confirm this, is to, you know, encourage a defendant to accept responsibility and go in there and hope for the best that he's going to get the minimum, and then we have the upper end range, and that's what we're going to be arguing for. So it gives us that opportunity, and it depends on the judge of which we appear in front of, you know, where is that really going to fall? But it gives us that flexibility to resolve more cases with plea agreements, because that is very critical, and always we stress, and people seem to forget, a plea agreement is a conviction. And that's, it's very important, because it does resolve and close a case. As far as offenders, you know, I've been doing this too long, and I just have a very black-and-white perspective on this. First and foremost, pedophile, there is no cure, I don't care how long you put them in treatment, a pedophile is a pedophile, and those are people we do our best to keep locked up and out of the community for as long as possible. When you get into the sex offenders, I like put them into two groups, there's predators, and then there are opportunists. And those, and I know Ms. Bosz can talk about, you know, that's the difference, that's, that's the, that's those are the assessments they look at. Is this a predator, or is this just an opportunist that just happened to be on the dance floor at one of the nightclubs here and gropes somebody? That's an opportunist, as opposed to someone who, you know, puts a roofie in a drink, or hangs around with somebody who's getting drunk and wants to take advantage of that person. Those are the people, that's why we try and look at much of that as we try to resolve these cases and work with the victim in those situations. And that's kind of answering a couple of your questions there, Madam Speaker, and also addressing the others that have been presented today.
Okay, so, so, yeah, that helps. We wanted to clarify that the Attorney General's office also, so you're saying leave mandatory minimums for first degree, but for the others, you want some flexibility because of, to protect victims?
Yeah. And the only other caveat to that is with the second-degree CSCs, where if it's a repeated, then there's a mandatory minimum of five years. And that's fine, we have no problems, yeah.
All right. And that we can hone in on the assessments, hopefully, but this, this thing about the predators versus the opportunists, how do you determine that without an assessment?
That's where we just meet with. That's generally where we just meet with the victims and find out, talking to other people, and we look at the facts of the case, and we get a better idea of what happened and how did it happen.
I see. Do you, Dr. Bazza, think there's any assessment tool to distinguish?
So, Madam Speaker, it's, I don't want to say it's complex, but there, these tools will measure, you know, will, will give information on the likelihood of recidivism. Now, if you're looking at violent recidivism, or, you know, like level one, level, depending, then there is a specific tool that, that does address that, and it's one of the tools that we do use. Now, if you're looking at, in terms of level of offenses, so like level one versus a level three offense, in a, in the psychosexual evaluation, for example, Ms. Charloff or Dr. Rapada will indicate what were the different risk assessment tools they used and the, and the reason for it. So I don't want to say it's their, their cookie cutter risk assessments, because the tools that we're using are, are empirically supported, and, and it's what other jurisdictions are also using, and they're tools that we've been, not me particularly, but Dr. Rapada and Ms. Charloff have been trained in, you know, so their selection of, they use different tools when they're conducting these evaluations, and does it depend on the level of offense? Yes, it does. So if you're, for example, if you're going to use, if you're looking, if it's a, if it's a high level of offense and you want to determine the likelihood of recidivism, then you might use the SORAC, as opposed to like the Static 99, right? So it depends, clinicians are trained in the use of the assessment tools, and they, they have, they make that determination on what to use considering the circumstances. Other circumstances, what tools do you use when you are incarcerated, as opposed to you're out in the community, you're on probation, or you're on parole? Again, there are different tools that are more empirically supported, you know, for those who are incarcerated, as for those who are not incarcerated. Likewise, treatment, so the treatment of choice is cognitive behavioral treatment for non-inprisoned sex offenders, and that's what we're using. Now, if, I don't want to speak, maybe I'll defer to Teresa, because she's the expert in, for Department of Corrections, so I'll defer to her in that.
Okay, thank you. But Chief O'Malley, before you leave, yeah?
One thing just to follow up on, and this is something I should have raised when Senator Dwayne has asked the question about what can be done to help all these different agencies? Training. We need more people trained.
That's exactly what that bill was intended to do, and it's now a law, and we're hoping if that's effective in one place, it should be made to be effective in other places.
And that's what Ms. Tiyama brought up, I mean, training, professionally trained people coming back to Guam and applying their, their new skills.
Chief O'Malley, back to that mandatory sentencing, and your, the data on the sentencing, I gotta go back to the courts to see if you've had this, but the, okay, so there were press releases from the AG's office, one said that, so a sexual assault case, a four-year-old girl, the perpetrator was sentenced to nine years on prison and three years parole. In contrast, there was a nineteen-year-old Micronesian man, it says, faces a possible sentence of sixteen to seventy years for second-degree robbery, terrorizing theft as a third-degree felony, theft as a misdemeanor, and a special allegation for possession or use of a deadly weapon. So are our man, are the sentence with, are our mandatory minimums enough now? Do they need to be increased? You're saying leave them alone, or that the top one to leave it alone? Yeah, and how do we get away from, this doesn't look, I mean, to us, if that's all we know about it, doesn't look just that way?
That, that brings up an interesting, I don't want, it's bad to use the word comical, but it is almost a comical situation. What we've been talking about throughout this morning is with our sex offender cases, you know, because a lot of times it's minors who are involved, and it's usually a family member there, and so we're, we're trying to resolve these cases, to, to just resolve the cases and bring justice for everybody who's involved. When you get into violent crimes, robberies, burglaries, and stuff like that, we do not run into that problem. We have victims who say, lock them up for as long as you can, and the victims always stand strong, they never change their story, and that's why, and, and most of the time, and that's the headache we run into with our, our burglary charges. When we see, you know, our daily confinement sheet come in and you see burglaries, usually there's like four or five cases tied to that one individual, because they go out there, and that's where we run into the true recidivism. They just, you know, they believe every house is their house that they can go in and help themselves to, and, and those victims have no mercy. And I've been a victim of a burglary, and yes, you have no mercy on someone who has violated your sanctity of your home. And so, there, so we have cases where high recidivism rate, we have priors, so they immediately go to eighty-thirty, which is the, you know, the repeat offender statutes, that increases the sentencing ranges, and so we get longer sentences for those individuals. And that's why you see, it might seem to be a disparity, but it's because of the different type of victim and the different, higher recidivism rate with the violent crime people.
All right, thank you very much, Chief O'Malley. Can I go back to the judiciary, just, is the, well, the, the data on the sentencing, is that available? And can we get that? And you don't need to read it to us today, but if it's available, just want to know.
We don't keep data specific to that, Madam Speaker, but I think that we can extract it, and we can try to, you know, the AG's office probably, and they, he just left, but the AG's office might actually keep that data more readily available.
The sentencing, I have asked for data on the sentence lengths for sexual abuse offenders?
Right, right. So we don't keep that data, that's not a dataset that's normally collected, so we, I'll have to go back and, and talk to our folks about how to extract that data, and I don't know if the AG's office might just have it readily available in their normal, keeping count of how their cases go. I'm not, I'm not certain about that.
Yeah, if you could, please, and also, then what about the law currently requires annual reports regarding the number of departures from mandatory minimum sentences made by each judge?
Right, so that's the, the Safety Valve Act, I believe is what you're referring to, ma'am, and so that report is made annually. I don't, I'll have to double-check to make sure that you got the most recent one, but that, that is an annual report that is submitted by the judiciary, and I would note that my understanding is, at least as it relates to first and second-degree CSCs, those are no longer subject to the Safety Valve Act. I think it's Public Law thirty-six seventeen.
No departures from mandatory minimum for first and second, you're saying?
Right.
Bazza was saying only for first, but okay, I'll take a look at that, but so you're saying, so these were supposed to be reported to the Judicial Council every year, we had not been able to locate those?
Okay, so I'll look.
And we've requested several, I think, several times now, but, okay?
Okay.
Please, all right, and then, so we'll go to the Police Department, or, who would like to speak, the Department of Corrections, yes, please, this is your, your time, thank you.
Thank you once again. So we are discussing sentencing and treatment. I don't know where to start, I guess I can start from our end. When we receive a judgment at the Department of Corrections, our role at caseworking counseling is to make sure that we carry it out. One thing that I could try to recommend as far as, from my experience in being there, is that yes, we are very limited as far as treatment programs, and then prior to release, Director Ariola stated that the caseworking counseling office completes assessments, but this ORAS assessment tool is something that we just kind of threw together to make sure that we comply with the law and that we provide the, the parole board some kind of information to satisfy that. When we're talking about the quality versus just going through the procedure, I feel like, in my opinion, that we're just going through the procedure. This ORAS assessment that we complete is basically the pre-release assessment tool that says basically that this is their level of risk for recidivism, this is where they are, and, and if we feel that according to the score, they are safe to be able to return. So what I see, in my own personal opinion, as far as how we can be effective and reduce recidivism, I would like to see returning back to some of the good old days and some of the things that we used to do back in the day. One thing is that we no longer have defendants, when they're going to plead out, to waive their pre-sentence investigation. I think that if the, if they are going to plead out, that it would be mandatory, that rather than just shuffle all this through and then it falls on our plate, and I only have an office of three social workers to service three hundred inmates, and out of that, those three hundred plus, one hundred thirty-two of them are sex offenders. So, I mean, if I'm doing the math and seeing the workforce that I have, to me, it's virtually impossible to carry out everything for my division effectively. So I think if we want to look at teaming and getting together, that prior to their plea agreement, that they undergo this psychosexual evaluation, and that based on that, the readiness or the willingness to help chart the path for this defendant would be laid out, and every party within this roundtable would be able to do their part. I feel a lot of times that burden is just so heavy, heavily passed on for the little skill set that we have at our place, but, you know, the intent is there, we want to make it happen. So if the sentence says you're going to serve time until you complete this required treatment, they are, they're staying up there, we're not providing anything to them, and so they're just taking up very valuable time and space in our budget and with all our limited resources. So I think that is one thing I would like to recommend. Another thing is, if they do come in, they plead out, or they're, they're found guilty, they're sentenced to due time, that being that there are only two who are qualified from the judiciary to provide this type of treatment, that it'd be part of the court order, that while they're incarcerated, that they receive this treatment prior to, so that what's, you know, used to be back in the day with, I think it was, the defendants or the incarcerants would be transported to diagnostic and family counseling services, and they would go through weekly, right, kind of like AAN or NA or Sex Offender Anonymous groups, and they would meet there however often is required. So maybe we can go ahead and return to that, but then again, I'm not sure if I'd be shot, I mean, I would get in trouble for speaking that way, because who would be required to transport those individuals to their treatment? Of course, it would be put on the Department of Corrections, and thank goodness, you know, I think we got like two new vans, but then those, then, then it kind of like snowballs into other issues where it leads us to, you know, having to prioritize carrying out those judgments. So that's one, one, two, or three kind of things, I'm sorry if I'm being scattered, but another thing is that we now have, as Director Ariola said, we are very fortunate to have Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Clinic with us, so what we need to try to do is engage the services that they are going to provide. I think it's just, in my opinion, that whenever somebody does something where they can't regulate themselves in a community, it's almost certain that if you do a proper assessment, they're going to have some sort of diagnosis. I think there is a diagnosis for sexual offenders, and then you have all those levels. So it, it's not that difficult to try to find an avenue to provide that treatment, rather than to find a way not to, to provide that service. So if we're going to be focused on that, I am sure that we, early on, even at the pre-trial phase, that when these individuals are assessed, that when they are treat, when they are found with a diagnosis, that we can begin to, begin to start the treatment. I know that as far as these types of offenses, they're not, I'm not sure about the, the limits that Guam Behavioral Health has placed on actually serving this type of conviction, but that's for maybe Director Ariola to discuss with you guys. And then another thing is, during, during the course of that, let's say, while they, while they're incarcerated and they're receiving their treatment, then they can take that role in working with the judiciary to prepare them for release. I think it's frustrating for, for me, I can speak for my office, in that many of these individuals that are there are unable to receive, are not able to receive the treatment in a timely manner, so that we can satisfy their exit to the community. The, this reentry tool that we're using is just a very generic, general assessment, minus that being the parole board accepting it as an evaluation, because we're like, look, this guy was sentenced to do this much time, he was ordered an assessment, and he complied, so how are we going to, why, because of our lack of ability to provide that service, are we going to keep this individual here? How can we go ahead and say that if he is willing to access services in the community, that we return him? I know criminal sexual conduct, you know, convictions are appalling, nobody, nobody wants to have to deal with it, it takes a special person or, or category of people to do that, but at the same time, these individuals, if we as a community put in the proper safety factors and treatment, then it would be okay for them to return to the community. But failure for that is we make it a lot more difficult, because we do not have, as Attorney General, as Attorney O'Malley had stated, we don't have the skill set to provide it. So in my, the way I see it, is if we can't provide it, then we shouldn't be able to demand it. If we do demand it, then we should be able to provide it and be given the resources to do that. I think that, I, I don't know where I'm going from now, but for sake of time, I'll just cut off, thank you.
That was excellent, thank you so much for being very frank with us, and I appreciate that. That's exactly what that we had hoped to do prior law, but it looks like we need to do more work, but yes, it's to get everyone on the same page so that we can be effective. I wanted to ask the parole office if they had been also receiving any type, such type reports?
Mike Kinata, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, please identify yourself.
Michael Kinata, Chief Officer. I guess I'm going to speak on behalf of the parole division and the parole board, but I had to first start to thanking the judicial side, the court, for the reentry program that they have. Because of that reentry program, we were able to receive a lot of training, and that include the ORAS, the ORAS treatment, okay? There's different stages of the ORAS treatment, and as a result of that, a few years ago, that Paul Muffin's case, we had a big roundtable also, as far as assessments. As a result of that, the board did order that they will not hear any violent offenses or sex offense, no, they will not be heard by the board unless those things, the ORAS is done. So it's something, it's something that the board refers to. And then going back to the Muffin's case, I just want to make it known for the record that a lot of the sex offenders that are on parole have, do not necessarily, do not commit sex offenses to return, that would be the recidivism of sex offenders. A lot of these sex offenders, if they're on parole, the crimes they commit are other than sex offenses, other than sex offenses, okay? Majority, a lot of it is drug, drug cases. So the board, you know, we had a meeting, a working session, and they were trying to determine the definition of recidivism. Mike Kinata's determination of recidivism for sex offenders, if he was rearrested for a sex offense and revoked by the board for sex offense, so our stats will be low, but they opted to go to Webster's Dictionary's definition of recidivism. So of course, the recid rate will be higher. So our average revocation per year is like forty, forty-six parolees, and those are all other.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Kinata?
The average revocation of parole is like forty-six parolees per year.
Forty-six parolees out of how many?
Average of three hundred fifty cases.
Three hundred fifty.
Okay, and as a result of that roundtable we had a few years ago, sex offenders on parole are required to report in person to the parole office once a week. So once a week, the process engaged, it engages the way I expect them to be engaged in their, with their parolees, they'll be kind of like catching these things, or, you know, are they going wayward and things like that? So that, that helps regarding the sex offender, and I, and I like that, the reporting once a week. So that helps regarding the sex offender, and I like that, the reporting once a week. Like I said, the parole board will not hear any sex offense, sexual offense cases or violent offenses as determined by law, unless those things, ORS, an assessment is done. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Chief Kinata. With the public defender, or would like to chime in, we're going to go back to the judiciary, but any recommendations?
Thank you, Senator. I just wanted to give everyone some reassurance that there are sex offender counseling requirements in the plea agreements that we reach, and I brought an example of that with me today to use as a template. But the terms of parole that are laid out in here, and this was a third-degree criminal sexual conduct charge, are going to be that the gentleman registers as a Level 1 sex offender, undergoes and completes sex offender counseling where it's available, and the court rode in at DOC and upon release, and complies with after-care treatment programs recommended by the Department of Corrections counselors. And then, of course, there's many other terms there, but counseling is something that we're reaching agreements on and that I think everybody recognizes the importance of. I guess as far as when the psychosexual analysis is done, I guess my only concern there would be that if we do it pre-judgment, that it may be more difficult for a client to communicate freely about the things that are at issue here, prior to having the judgment entered or having the plea agreement on the record, because if it's rejected and we end up in trial, then they've created more evidence and there could be an issue there. So certainly, it's up to some of the other stakeholders, I think, to work out when that evaluation should take place, but for our purposes, it would be very challenging to put it too very far before the judgments on the record. I don't have a tremendous amount else unless there were specific questions.
Thank you very much. And if I could just get a copy of the page of the plea agreement that you read, or a sample, because, yeah, so there, it says, "where available," and I guess that's the issue now, is what is available and where is it available and that, yes, Mr. Taya?
So perhaps then, as far as semantics is concerned, maybe, I'm not sure, because I'm not the attorney, but maybe it could be, at the time of the plea agreement, it can be a condition, then prior to sentencing, once they get the evaluation, the court can come back and visit. I'm not sure how that works, but another thing we have to be specific is that if they are to receive an evaluation, rather than indicate at the Department of Corrections, then it can say that Guam Behavioral Health Wellness Clinic will provide the assessment while incarcerated at the Department of Corrections. Because remember, we have Jibwick, GMH, and DOC, so it has to be specific, because if DOC is going to be responsible and not Jibwick, then they'll be there forever at our facility.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you again, Deputy Director Morrison, for being here and always helping us on making sure our policies are realistic and in line with your experience.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. Chief of Police, would you like to add anything? Thank you. So we'll go back to the judiciary, Chief.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I just would like to comment that in terms of the judiciary doing all the evaluations and having the recommendations for the Department of Corrections to follow, I think it's important that the institution itself, the Department of Corrections, conduct their own assessments, because they would be able to, they're going to have these defendants in their custody, you know, for several years, and I think it's important that they also, there'll also be an assessment done there because of programming for the inmates in terms of what treatment may be needed during the term of imprisonment, and whether there are recommendations, as well as in to coincide with any recommendations for release when they are in fact going to be released under their supervision on parole. So I would recommend that the Department of Corrections also conduct their own assessments, and that way they can work on their own programming and be able to identify that for the inmates.
Sorry, if you don't mind that I just piggyback, Chief. Madam Speaker, it was my understanding that the CBT ISO was a training that was also provided to a couple of staff members at the Department of Corrections, and that there may have been, I don't know as of today, some development for sex offender treatment while, you know, our highly incarcerated offenders, our high-risk offenders are at the Department of Corrections for that institution, and then for the length of time, because it's important that while they're there, that that treatment is also continued from there, and then upon release, obviously, it's sustained beyond that.
Yes, that's what's the goal, I agree. So are you familiar with that training?
Yes, so I just want to, I don't want to be, repeat myself, but yes, now we have the Guam Behavioral Health Wellness Clinic. We cannot, I think it would be more productive to order that while the person is incarcerated, while the person is serving their sentence, that they receive this treatment from the Guam Behavioral Health Wellness Clinic while they are incarcerated at the Department of Corrections. Yes, we did receive, so Mark Perez with Social Work Office and parole officer Lisa Taina Tonga were the two recipients of CBISO, as well as, I reached out to the court prior to this hearing to ask them, how many individuals from probation or diagnostic treatment had also received the CBA ISO, because we were just, we were given complimentary seats at that as far as reentry. We have provided the treatment within our time, but that is something that can be either individually or if true to fidelity with a co-facilitator. So there's only one individual in my office who does that, not true to fidelity individually, and then we have Officer Taina Tonga. So the intent is, I'm not sure when, as far as the delivery, for those who have been placed on parole, every single one of those individuals from the time we received it have received CBISO. As far as while they are on parole, if they did not receive it, then I'm not sure where that carries out. My thing is also, if, I'm not sure even if any of the CBISO facilitators, if anyone is ever placed because of the mandatory sentencing, are receiving that. So as far as the delivery of the service, it's very nice, as I noticed, that it's, everything comes, falls on the responsibility of the Department of Corrections. And so if it does fall on us, the only thing I can say is that if it is expected, then please give us the tools and the resources so that we can serve the population to who we're charged with. But right now, out of 132 individuals, I only have one social worker, and that is just a collateral duty of providing this service to, along with everything else. Thank you.
So the social worker is the one who's trained and does it as a collateral duty? All right.
Yes, ma'am. So I would just say that moving forward, that the court would consider, the AG, that this, that the treatment be provided by Guam Behavioral Health Wellness Clinic while they are placed at the Department of Corrections. I think that that's just logical.
Right, thank you. Chief Kinata, another part of the law required that the parole board would have access to pre-sentence investigation reports? Are you getting access to those reports?
I haven't, I haven't heard anything from my prosecutor, so I assume that you're getting-
No, during the board hearings, does the board have access?
It's in the law also, 78 statute.
But they said they had not been receiving the pre-sentence reports, so are they receiving those?
I'm not made aware of that, but I did discuss that.
Ms. Taya, you said a lot of those pre-sentence sentencing reports are not done if there's a plea agreement.
That's, well, as far as I'm understanding in the judgments that I receive, it's typically that the pre-sentence investigation report is waived. We do not receive the pre-sentence investigation reports as, or any other information from the court, other than the magistrates and court orders and judgments. So as far as when we're really looking at planning-
In that answer, are you speaking on behalf of the parole office also?
Well, parole usually comes to our office and does collateral research, so whatever legal documents that we have, we provide to them. So if he doesn't, then I can say that we don't get it. We're not privy to it.
So when I was a social worker back in '84, it wasn't a problem. When we went down and requested one, we got it. So through the years, kind of like, that like stopped, but for parole matter, we are entitled to get this pre-sentence. So we just talked about it, no one has made any concerns, known to me, regarding getting access to it or reading it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Speaker, I can speak from my experience from back in the day when I did probation office work, is that we, DOC was part of the normal distribution. So back in the day, they used to get it. The only thing that they would not be receiving are the recommendations. So we used to provide recommendations to the court for sentencing, and we would just detach the recommendation and send forward that, because when we're talking about seamlessness, there's no sense in us having to redo everything that had already been done at the pre-sentencing phase.
Right, so it was found back in one of our earlier roundtables that was not occurring with the parole board and that they needed access. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anything, oh, my colleagues, Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the recommendations, and I do look forward to more collaboration with the different agencies to hopefully get a more holistic approach to, you know, sex offenders. So I do appreciate all your recommendations. It makes a lot of sense that while they're serving time, that they should also be receiving the treatment and assessment prior to, you know, release, if that's the case. So I guess, have you been in talks with Guam Behavioral Health to see if this is going to move forward, Ms. Taya? Because your recommendation was to work with Guam Behavioral Health. Have you talked with Guam Behavioral Health, or is this a plan that you're going to put forward together?
I believe that, I have not been, my director would be in discussion with that, but as far as my basic knowledge is that I don't think our psych, their full-time psychologist assigned to us is entertaining any CSC convictions or that sort of crime. It seems that, it's kind of like a universal thing, where, I guess because of their licensure, I'm not sure, but I know that she's not going to be addressing CSC offenses and treatment, unless it's for other precipitating diagnoses that led to, you know, co-occurring.
So is it a matter of specialization that they don't have at this time, but they're willing to work something out eventually?
I really, I cannot speak to that, Senator.
Okay. And as far as standardizing assessments, so I don't know if I heard this correctly, Ms. Villagomez, but you were mentioning that DOC should do their own assessments. Is there an implication that the site has an impact on the type of assessment and therefore the treatment?
No, I was commenting on the comment made by Ms. Taya, where the court should do all the assessments and they should receive them and the recommendations, and that way they can follow them. I think it's important that the Department of Corrections conducts their own assessment and so that they can determine based on what their own programming, while they have the defendant there or the inmate there, what kind of programming is important to do that. So there is, you know, in terms of doing their own independent assessment. And I'll just interject, I will say this coming from the system that I came from in terms of the federal system, and so not that we need to mirror that, but in terms of, if you, in terms of the facilities conducting their own independent assessments, in addition to whatever supporting documents they received, so that they can determine, because they're going to be having the inmate for a period of time, a long period of time, to be able to conduct whatever programming or treatment programs that they have and their work towards eventual release into the community. So that's where I was coming from.
Great, so it's a matter of like due diligence, is that what you're suggesting?
If you don't mind me adding as well, you know, the sex offender risk assessment tools that are available to sex offenders are all, you know, dynamic-based, you know, they're statistic and dynamic-based, things that are static in their lives, criminal histories are always going to be a static type of information we can collect. So information that can be gathered by the defendant, you know, based off of their current situation, is always important, especially in that pre-trial phase, and then post-adjudication, and then before release from the Department of Corrections, because their statistic, their static environment is going to continue to stay the same, it's always going to be the dynamic-changing factors in their lives that we would come back and do additional risk assessments on an offender as they progress through their time period, either on supervised release or even under the regular registry.
Thank you. For Dr. Bazza, so I have a question regarding the suite of assessments that you do for the psychosexual analysis, and I'm just wondering if you actually did a study on, I guess, verified the accuracy of the approach? If you did like a study on the non-repeat offenders versus the repeat offenders, have you been able to do that kind of check to see?
You know, I have an ear code, I can't hear you, I'm so sorry, Senator, could you shout it out?
Sure, I was just curious about the suite of assessments that you do for psychosexual analysis, and if you're able to verify the accuracy, if you're, by looking at those that are multiple offenders versus the non-multiple offenders?
You're talking about the background of offenders who have more than one sex offense?
Yes.
Was that the question?
Yes.
So there are different risk assessments to determine, like for high-level and for low-level offenders. So for individuals who have repeat offenses, they may use a specific risk assessment. If you want something more comprehensive, then you would use, like for example, the ACBA. So like the ACBA is probably, it's very comprehensive, it's an evidence-based assessment, and you, that's an example what a clinician may be likely to use, that type of assessment for a high-risk offender, a high-risk offender, as opposed to a low-risk offender. And is that the question you're asking me, or?
Yeah, I guess I was kind of curious, because in the earlier part of this panel, there was, I guess, an acknowledgement that not all cases get prosecuted for several reasons, and I'm just wondering, can we really trust that those 11,000, I'm sorry, 1,135 sex offenders who were not registered as multiple offenders, is that really accurate? Or is there a group of them that are actually repeat offenders, but we just haven't been able to prosecute them?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking, as in, how many of our registered sex offenders who are, who may have had a CSC charge initially but was never prosecuted, is?
Yeah, so that way they don't, so how, basically, how can we trust this recidivism a number, right? And-
Well, on the sex offender registry side, because we are post-adjudication, we are reactive to the final disposition, a lot of our information is based off of, how many cases are we registering this one offender for? So, you know, we can, our recidivism rates are based off of, how many CSC cases does this one registrant have? And in the data provided by our chief, you know, we had a total of 161 repeat cases. That's just cases. And out of the 161 cases, they belonged to 51 sex, registered sex offenders, and this number comes from when we first registered somebody to where we're currently at to today, and that's inclusive of the deceased offenders, the incarcerated offenders, people we've expired from the registry, the deported offenders. It goes beyond, you know, the life of the registrant themselves at some times. So out of those cases, we had a total of 40 registered sex offenders who only had two cases. And then beyond that is, we had a total of nine offenders who had three cases, and then our highest is four cases in total, and we had a total of two registered sex offenders who are reported as having only two, who have four cases that we are aware of.
I guess the question I'm asking is, do you track those numbers of arrests that have been committed by these sex offenders, but does not go to trial to?
We don't, we don't track arrests, it's solely based off of conviction. Chapter 89 solely tells you that registered sex offenders become registered post-sentencing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Senator Perez, if I may, to comment on that question with regard to the 1,190-plus, is so earlier when I was alluding to the department, I mean, excuse me, the Bureau of Social Services, basically the CPS- mean, I, excuse me, the Bureau of Social Services, basically the CPS department, is chances are if there has been, had been no conviction or brought before the court, maybe what we can do is visit juvenile court to see if the matter, as far as the perpetrator's concerned, if, whether it be a family member or, or someone who is part of the family unit, may have gotten, may have gone through the court system, but through the civil matter. So I'm not sure in that avenue as far as entertaining CSC, CSC offenders, whether, if, if they do go before the court because it's a family member and there's a, the lack of, there's a decision not to prosecute, then what kind of treatment is being provided at that moment with the court intervention? And then who, who, who is responsible for working with the family at that moment? Is it Guam Behavioral Health? Is it, is it Public Health BOSA? Is it the court system? So when we're looking at trying to address recidivism, that's one thing that we also may, may look at is maybe, doesn't come across civilly, but it may, I mean criminally, but maybe it comes before juvenile family court.
Thank you so much, and I do look forward to future collaborations as stakeholders. So thank you for your recommendations. Thank you, Speaker.
Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I mean, it shows that this is, there's a lot involved in this issue, and there's no simple, clear-cut process. I mean, I'm hearing from DOC that they need assistance, obviously, in doing these assessments and don't have necessarily the capability right now or resources to do it. And that's a very important component that does need to be addressed, be it through behavioral health, working in partnership with DOC, or however we work that moving forward, because I think it's a critical element. I mean, I recall that case that happened a couple of years ago where we had a young, what, twelve-year-old girl that was walking to the bus stop that was sexually assaulted by an individual that had just been let out not too long earlier for a similar offense on another child. And obviously, those things concern us, and, and I don't even know. I don't know if, you know, maybe we ask, I don't even know if these types of issues with individuals suffer from this or even treatable. I don't know. I don't know if you know. Do you know? Is it treatable? I don't know. Some of these things are not. People that are programmed this way for whatever reason, sometimes revert back no matter what treatment is given to them, and those are the things we're concerned about. What do we do with those people? And then they have legal rights over, you know, and we have victims, and how do we balance that with the rights of the victims who've been offended? Because we're talking about these issues after they've long happened, after our children and other members of our community have already been victimized. We're trying to figure it out after the fact. And, you know, there's a bigger concern, how do we prevent these things in the first place? Because our children are growing up traumatized with being treated this way and having to go through these experiences. So I hope, Madam Speaker, we continue this dialogue, because I think it's, there's a need to, just to get awareness of what's going on on our policy side as we address legislation, and then even just the inter-agency collaboration among all these respective departments and agencies and the court, and how we're dealing with and addressing these issues, because it is a tremendous burden. It's very heavy. It's very heavy on, on how do we, how do we properly address it? And even more importantly, how do we help those that are victimized by it come out of this? And how do we even address the issue of preventing this in the first place in our community? Because I almost feel like our children have to be, from the time they're born, they have to be armed with how to protect themselves against the community than society here that they're being brought into, because we don't have the ability to protect them, and that's just, just, it's hard to fathom that. It's very difficult to fathom that when this continuously, almost every day is, is in our headlines and we're having to deal with these kind of offenses that are so offensive, these offenses that are so offensive in our community. But with that, Madam Speaker, I know it's been quite a few hours and our, our visitors are tired and probably hungry like we are, and we have a one o'clock hearing, and I hope we get to take a break, because even our audiovisual people back there need a break for a short period of time.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thanks, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. And again, panel, I know this is time-consuming, and you are so very important to our criminal justice system, all of you, but, but it is an issue that, you know, it wasn't just the one case. That case brought it to my attention as a senator, because it happened during my term, but it's a decade, and the, so the, we've got media articles of a decade's worth of repeat sexual offenders, level-one sexual offenders, and we want to address this, and we try to address this by making sure that from the very beginning, from pre-trial release, judges are informed of the risk of this particular offender that on, that's pre-trial, and then after the trial, of course, if there's a plea agreement or if there's a trial and a sentencing, that they are fully informed, that the judges are fully informed of what we have available to us, what we don't have available to us, and if they're not available to us at DOC, then why are we expecting a different outcome in the end? And that's really the most important part. We want a different outcome. We need to do things differently. So you're all here today, and this is very good. I wish this discussion happened after that law had passed, because that would have, it was supposed to happen amongst you, right? All of you, and so that you could facilitate the implementation of that law. So we're going to help, and we will do what we can, and I understand resources, but it's not always resources. It's really just getting us to the best recommendations possible, sharing those with each other, making sure that we can help where you can't do it, the other person can, that type of thing, sharing the duties of getting this information that is valuable, this treatment that is necessary, or else we have to decide as a community and policymakers that the treatment's not available, we should increase our mandatory minimums. I, I don't understand. It's like we have to understand that whole picture, right? And we want to work with you, so I'm asking you to please work with us, so everything, and I appreciate all the work that you have done, and that's a lot of work. We, we've all heard it today. So thank you very, very much. And Chief and GPD Sisus Massey for all your time here, Attorney Generals, Officers, Victims Advocates, thank you very much. Department of Corrections and our parole officer chief, thank you so much. Public defender, always instrumental, Sisus Massey. And to the judiciary and many components, we've got administration, we've got the probation office, we've got the sex offender registry division, we've got the treatment division of the judiciary, Sisus Massey. And thank you for your, your recommendations today and your, your data. Sisus Massey. Take care. This hearing, it's, it's one oh five. This hearing's now adjourned.